As we start every meeting, I am required to remind you that this meeting is being broadcast live and is also being recorded for use at a later date if needed. I'd ask you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you also please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. As I stated, be mindful this meeting is being recorded. It is a great honor to have the Indian Head School Guitar Ensemble with us tonight. Congratulations, and we are honored to have you. I understand we're going to be honored with a little play of music.
Yeah, thank you so much for inviting us to play. We were invited down to Boston to play a big concert at the Music Educators Conference, and that's still going on. So, we're going to perform three of our short songs for you tonight, and then we're going to play our full set for you at the Garden of Love Festival on May 15 through Tuesday night at 6:00 p.m. from four parts. So, be sure to catch that one. We're going to do three short songs. First one we're going to play is "I Have Fairly Little Talent," and we're going to have guitars playing solos and then...
Okay. Here.
The next one we're going to play for you is in four parts, and it's called "Legend And we're going to finish off with an old Beatles song called "Get Back."
Thank you very much. Great job.
Sorry, Chris. I lost a few fouls, but not that bad.
Yeah, fifteen. Can you tell you that?
What?
Since New York, about fifteen.
Nice.
And then...
Yeah.
Diet, just diet.
Why don't you take a seat?
You'd have to get up at least three o'clock.
What's that?
You'd have to get up at least two o'clock in the morning.
There's something, as you know, every afternoon, there's something.
That's what they're saying. You'd have to get up at two o'clock in the morning to do it.
Good plan of fitnesses, isn't it?
They are, actually. On my knees, twenty-four, twenty-four-five.
Who is that one?
Fairhaven.
Not exactly.
Some will put twenty-four-five, though.
Really?
Five days a week, Monday through Friday.
I saw that one.
Same? Same?
What about me?
Hey, Mike. They stay right now, right? They come from my dad's grandson, but not that son. Yeah, it is.
It's on TV.
I guess he wasn't getting a year from you.
You must get some.
Right at all.
I can't imagine you was that surprised.
I'm like, I can't imagine.
Is it beneficial? I mean, just get tired. Show one to people.
I did not. I did not such... The... There's one in here.
Um...
The, uh... Was it an ice one, a gold player?
No. Uh-oh. Yes, it is. I'm jealous of one of them. Yeah, well... Oh, hell. Oh, hell. Was it?
Morning. Like, it's like, who is it?
No, it was just... She had announced he was two opening... It doesn't make sense. Some other days, we give him a set of people, wouldn't you? Just wondering. He's on.
Wasn't the four years old?
No.
He's in the system.
I'd do you.
Yeah. Yes. Just now. Yeah, I cleaned it.
Just above.
There's so many trees down. It's nuts. Like, in the wood line, but all jammed out of the trees.
It's basically broken, loose branches.
Yeah.
So, I cleaned up. My view of it...
Yeah, it's right out.
I just got a pin over and over.
It's still real wet.
It's not too bad.
Must be like, three trees fell in there. One big one. You can't even move. Cut the logs a little, this much. Get a hole. Try cutting one in half. It's, uh...
Good. Good evening, and thank you all for coming. We've got a slight change to the agenda, so we're going to hear our student advisory report first.
Hi. Hi. So, the guidance department will be sending students in their junior year to the Boston National College Fair this Friday. Here, they will be exposed to hundreds of colleges and secondary education institutions from across the country, as well as a few from outside of the country. There will also be admissions counselors and other personnel that will be there to guide and help students through the college process. John Russell Studio Salon and Day Spa at 587 Washington Street in Whitman will be hosting a cut-a-thon in support of Women in Hanson Dollars for Scholars. The event will be held on Sunday, April 22nd, from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m. With all the proceeds being donated to the scholarship fund, the cut-a-thon is for wet cuts only. Women in Hanson Dollars for Scholars will also be hosting a meet raffle of... In support of the Lori Sawtell Memorial at Damien's Pub located at 279 Spring Street in Hanson on Monday, April 23rd at 7:30 p.m. All proceeds from the event will benefit graduating high school seniors from Whitman and Hanson who are continuing on to college. ELEA MCAS is also quickly approaching, and the dates can be found on the district and school websites. Women in Hanson Regional High School Parent Teacher Conferences will be held on April 12th for afternoon and evening conferences. On April 3rd, Women in Hanson students showcase their dedication to academic pursuits in the annual Spelman Oerectical Competition. In essence, judges are looking at the student's ability to awaken the interest and hold the attention of the audience through the use of evidence and literary material. The English department is extremely proud of all the participants and congratulates them on a job well done. First place was taken by Dorothy DiMasio Donahue, second place Christina Woodward, and third place Madison Jollymore. And lastly, one of the pillars of the Women in Hanson Strategic Plan is school safety. The school safety team has worked collaboratively to recommend training sessions in which staff will be educated on how to better respond to crisis situations. Schools would be closed, and no students or parents would be in the building during this training. The training sessions and times can be found on the school and district websites.
Anyone have any questions for Mara? Mara, thank you.
Thank you, Mara.
Thank you. Thank you. An entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 20th, 2018.
No motion.
Moved in second and discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. We're going to be bouncing around for the sake, a little bit of saving some time for some people that are here this evening that have to be back here tomorrow morning, so if you see me jumping around on the agenda, it's just for the sake of trying to save people's time. Superintendent's report?
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to begin by saying how much we enjoyed hearing our guitar ensemble from the Indian Head School. This is an extracurricular program, and because Mr. Gillander does have expertise with guitar, that's why that program is at Indian Head School. This year, they were selected to participate in the Music... Massachusetts Music Educators Conference, which was held the day of the Nor'easter, the first one in March. The weather was so bad that we felt it was not safe, especially to be at the Seaport Hotel. So, as a result, we invited them to a meeting in March. And guess what happened again? We had another Nor'easter, and we had to cancel. So, that's why we had them here this evening, and I think it's wonderful to see what our music teachers do with our students. This program's been well supported by the Indian Head School. In our other schools, our music teachers also use their own special areas of expertise to enhance music instruction for our students. So, I think it was a great way to begin a jam-packed school committee meeting. It is my pleasure to welcome Pat Friesinger here this evening. Pat, through the Gelfand Family Foundation, has funded our No Out of Science program to the tune of close to a half a million dollars. This science program is extremely special. I know Mr. Stefanski's here this evening as well, and some of our elementary teachers. We have... And parents. I know Kevin's talked about the program as well. We have never seen students more engaged in learning science, the hands-on aspects of that. And we are now at the end of Gelfand Family Foundation funding. We'd love to see it go on to eternity, but of course, that won't happen. But we wanted to recognize you this evening. So, Pat, we just... This is Pat, if you'd like to stand up. I don't know if you'd like to say a few words, maybe, about the whole project and what we've been doing, and maybe the foundation? Could you go to the mic? Could you go to the microphone? Be great. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Probably wonder who I am, but... So, my daughter-in-law Macy Gelfand worked at DuVall, maybe about four or five... Yeah, I see some of the teachers, I remember. Four or five years ago, and she... I don't know all the details, but she had identified, at that time, you know, the need for some enrichment enhancement in the science area, science/technology area, and so that's kind of how it all started. And I know initially, they had tried an approach of having someone... Hiring someone to come, a teacher, or to come and help the teachers, but then that didn't work as well, and then we... They got to the No... Working with No Atom, which is a pretty amazing organization that has relationships with schools all over the country. I'm not sure if it's international also, but certainly all over the country. And I... Macy and my daughter-in-law now live... My son and daughter-in-law, they have moved to Arizona, but we came to... Actually, for a day to observe the program a year or probably maybe two years ago.
Maybe two years ago.
Maybe, I know.
Yeah.
It was such... It was so much fun. I was just so... Such a pleasure to see, you know, the different... You know, it was very well organized, and we went around to different classes and saw the hands-on, and it was... It was just a delight. It was just really, really fun. And also to hear from the teachers, how much it was... It seemed to me, from listening, that it was as much fun for the teachers as it was for the students, you know, to be having this as part of the curriculum. And just as one little aside, but so... I think this is kind of funny. I... My Macy and my son now have a little baby, who's 14 months, and Macy, being the special needs teacher that she is, she wanted to make him something called like an OT board, where you put different, you know, like latches and different things. And one of the things she wanted on the board, it was very funny, was a circuit that would turn on a little light bulb, so that... Because he likes turning on, you know, 14-month-old, like turning on the switches. And so, both... I was out there and helping her complete this, and both of us said, "This is like the No Atom, one of the simple circuits."
Yeah.
That's liking the No Atom kits, and so anyhow, it was... It was just fun. It was just fun, thinking about it.
Well, we thank you so much for this generous donation.
Oh, you're very welcome.
And it really does change the lives of our teachers and our students. They need to get engaged in science at very early ages, and good research shows good engagement with science, and all the way from preschool up helps children. We need STEM people in our world, and thank you so much for all the support that you've given us.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're going to postpone the North River Collaborative Report until next month. There's not a whole lot to report, and I can combine that in efforts to move the agenda along. The next piece, we hope you will all find very interesting, and we have a PowerPoint for you about what we call OECD, which is an assessment that is much different than anything we had ever done here in Whitman-Hanson. I was called in November of 2016 by the Commissioner of Education, who at the time was Mitchell Chester, passed away last June, and he asked if Whitman-Hanson would like to participate in this assessment at no cost to the school district. But this assessment allowed us to get a more global perspective of what our students know and are able to do, and how they are going to be able to compete in a world economy, because as we know, our students today are going to be working all over the world. So, we have a presentation for you, and the PowerPoint is right up here, and I think we... I think I'm first, so we will begin. We're going to give you some background on this. Do you have it? Okay, I'm actually going to come up here, because it'll be easier. So, we're beginning this presentation about telling you what OECD is, and the purpose of OECD is to really look at the whole issue of economic and social well-being of people around the world. And as a result of OECD, they're really using an exam, which is called PISA, which is a test that really looks at internationally how students work, and it stands for the Program for International Student Assessment. This is given worldwide. It's given to a variety of nations, it's given to subgroups of nations, and we were very interested to see, how do we do here in the U.S.? How do we do in Massachusetts? And more specifically, how do we do here in Whitman-Hanson in comparison to the rest of the world? And how well are our children prepared to go out into a very global community? So, what this test does, it's a little bit different than an MCAS, which is looking more at competency in content areas, is it's testing critical thinking and problem-solving. So, students are presented with various challenges they need to solve. It also looks at what is their school performance, and lastly, it will compare what we do on a global forefront. So, we want... Without this, when the commissioner asked us to do this, we... I talked to Jeff, and we also worked with the high school and felt that this was a good endeavor for our students. So, what we look at, three features are international benchmarks. When we look at Massachusetts, and clearly Massachusetts has high standards, but we're now looking at what is expected on the international scene, and then we look at what are the student profiles in math, reading, and science. And lastly, it asks about student engagement and learning environments, and as you hear from the rest of the presenters, you'll hear that those are the questions that really aren't asked on MCAS. How do you feel about your classes? Do your teachers know you? Do you know them? What is the climate of your school? Do you feel that what you're learning is relevant to you today and in the future? And those are the type of things that they look at for the students. So, this talks about what happened here at Whitman-Hanson. We tested... Can't even read it from here. It was about 70 students, 80 students. We had to motivate them to participate in one more test, so that was kind of interesting, and Jeff was good. Jeff and Ruth Carrigan were good at motivating them to do this. So, this was done with 15-year-olds. The PISA test, in our version in the U.S. called OECD, only tests 15-year-olds, and the students are never given the whole test. They are given components of the test. The PISA test is really a 10-hour test, where there's no way we're going to subject our 15-year-olds... Yeah, Mara wants to do it, but most students don't want to do a 15-hour test. So, when they put the data together, they do it as a composite. So, we don't get individual tests. For example, Mara, did you take it or not? You were probably too old, right? So, we get a composite for the district, but we don't get individual... Or the high school, we don't get individual scores. So, it looks at benchmark data, which we'll talk about academically, school climate and culture, and then it actually looks at, how do we analyze this? What do we do? And I think the most important thing is it's not just about testing what happens here for 15-year-olds who are in ninth and 10th grade. It looks at what's happened to them from preschool all the way up through age 15. So, we're not just testing one little snapshot. It's a longitudinal look at where are our students at this point in time. Okay, next. You coming on? Okay. So, Ruth Carrigan really coordinated this, so when we decided that this was a good idea, she was our number-one person to contact and say, "Don't you think this is a good idea?" Right?
So, the experience at Whitman-Hanson, it was interesting, because we test a lot at the high school. We obviously have MCAS. We test all of our 10th and 11th graders and PSATs, and most of our kids take the SATs, but this is really a different kind of experience for them. So, for this test, we actually tested 78 15-year-olds. They were randomly selected, and the sample included 25 Grade IX students and 53 Grade X students. Students and families had the chance to opt out if they chose, and we did have about 20 families that opted out, and as they opted out, the list generated more names for us to choose from. And prior to administration, we met... Jeff and I met with all the students and really gave them a pep talk and told them how important this was, that they were representing our school, and they were representing our country, and we really, really valued them and wanted them to do their best on it. And I think they really embraced that. They participated in... We tested in one computer lab, so we did it over five test sessions, and the test sessions were about two hours long. And some of the ways we incentivized them is we did give them breakfast every day, and you'd be surprised at how... What an incentive breakfast can be. They were very happy about that. During their breaks, they had snacks. We did some small prizes for each of the sessions, some gift cards and some Whitman-Hanson shirts and water bottles and things. And then there was a grand prize of an iPad. So, that was great, and the kids, I think they really enjoyed it, and they created... We created a really positive testing environment for them, and they were engaged, and I really do believe that they did their best, because you can see that in the results. So, just a summary of the results. If we look at the mean performance for Whitman-Hanson in reading, math, and science, you can see that we fared better than the U.S., and that was really great to see. Our kids took it seriously, they did their best, and it really showed in the scores. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Seeling to talk a little bit more.
Thanks, Ruth. Brian Seeling, Math Curriculum Director for the District. I'm going to just go slightly deeper into the results. I don't want to give you too big of a headache here with this table, but basically, what it shows here is... And the results were pretty consistent, whether we looked at reading, math, or science, that we have very few students who participated who scored below the baseline level. The vast majority you see were in the intermediate levels. I'll talk slightly more about that in just a moment. And then we also did have a considerable population in each of the three tested areas who achieved at the top levels. I think this graphic may illustrate the comparison... The distinction between the levels, as well as the comparison between us...
that those are the questions that really aren't asked on MCAS. How do you feel about your classes? Do your teachers know you? Do you know them? What is the climate of your school? Do you feel that what you're learning is relevant to you today and in the future? And those are the type of things that they look at for the students. So this talks about what happened here at Whitman-Hanson. We tested, I can't even read it from here. It was about 70 students, 80 students. We had to motivate them to participate in one more test. So that was kind of interesting. And Jeff was good, Jeff and Ruth Kerrigan were good at motivating them to do this. So this was done with 15-year-olds. The PISA test in our version in the U.S. called OECD only tests 15-year-olds. And the students are never given the whole test. They are given components of the test. The PISA test is really a 10-hour test where there's no way we're going to subject our 15-year-olds, yeah, Mara wants to do it, but most students don't want to do a 15-hour test. So when they put the data together, they do it as a composite. So we don't get individual tests. For example, Mara, did you take it or not? You were probably too old, right? So we get a composite for the district, but we don't get, or the high school, we don't get individual scores. So it looks at benchmark data, which we'll talk about academically, school climate and culture, and then it actually looks at, how do we analyze this? What do we do? And I think the most important thing is it's not just about testing what happens here for 15-year-olds who are in ninth and 10th grade. It looks at what's happened to them from preschool all the way up through age 15. So we're not just testing one little snapshot. It's a longitudinal look at where are our students at this point in time. Okay, next. You coming on?
Okay, so Ruth Kerrigan really coordinated this. So when we decided that this was a good idea, she was our number one person to contact and say, "Don't you think this is a good idea?"
So the experience at Whitman-Hanson, it was interesting because we test a lot at the high school. We obviously have MCAS. We test all of our 10th and 11th graders and PSATs. And most of our kids take the SATs. But this is really a different kind of experience for them. So for this test, we actually tested 78 15-year-olds. They were randomly selected. And the sample included 25 grade nine students and 53 grade 10 students. Students and families had the chance to opt out if they chose. And we did have about 20 families that opted out. And as they opted out, the list generated more names for us to choose from. And prior to administration, we met, Jeff and I met with all the students and really gave them a pep talk and told them how important this was, that they were representing our school and they were representing our country. And we really, really valued them and wanted them to do their best on it. And I think they really embraced that. They participated in, we tested in one computer lab, so we did it over five test sessions. And the test sessions were about two hours long. And some of the ways we incentivized them is we did give them breakfast every day. And you'd be surprised at how, what an incentive breakfast can be. They were very happy about that. During their breaks, they had snacks. We did some small prizes for each of the sessions, some gift cards and some Whitman-Hanson shirts and water bottles and things. And then there was a grand prize of an iPad. So that was great. And the kids, I think they really enjoyed it and they created, we created a really positive testing environment for them. And they were engaged. And I really do believe that they did their best because you can see that in the results. So just a summary of the results. If we look at the mean performance for Whitman-Hanson in reading, math, and science, you can see that we fared better than the U.S. And that was really great to see. Our kids took it seriously. They did their best. And it really showed in the scores. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Seeling to talk a little bit more.
Thanks, Ruth. Brian Seeling, Math Curriculum Director for the district. I'm going to just go slightly deeper into the results. I don't want to give you too, too big of a headache here with this table. But basically what it shows here is, and the results were pretty consistent, whether we looked at reading, math, or science, that we have very few students who participated who scored below the baseline level. The vast majority you see were in the intermediate levels. I'll talk slightly more about that in just a moment. And then we also did have a considerable population in each of the three tested areas who achieved at the top levels. I think this graphic may illustrate the comparison, the distinction between the levels as well as the comparison between us and our performance and across the country. And so I just want to take a moment and sort of share with you what the expectations are for students taking this test in terms of where they fall in the left side, middle, or right side of this graph. So the, the below level one or low level, or level one, level two, excuse me, these are students who are really only able to answer questions if all the relevant information is provided for them. They're not able to go into depth or make any connections or application beyond the concrete, specific example that, for which the information is provided. As you move toward the middle, which is, as you can see, where many of our students fell, in the red bar, bars there, these are students who have the ability to demonstrate some simple problem-solving strategies. They can execute clearly described procedures. They have the ability to do some interpretation. And then at the far right end, these are students who can really synthesize information, conceptualize it, generalize it, take what's presented to them and communicate reasoning skills, critical thinking skills. And this is what we aspire for. And this is very consistent with things that you've heard me present about in the past as far as the direction and trend we see in the standardized testing. No longer are we content for students to just answer procedural questions. The goal is for them to be able to apply their knowledge, demonstrate conceptual understanding, and, and communicate effectively. So, so what this experience for us with OECD and the, the results we gained from it said is that we're, we're trending in the right direction. Our goals are sound, our motives are pure, and we are trying in all areas, reading, math, science, and beyond, to create and develop critical thinking skills among our students at every developmental This is an example of a released item from the test, just to give you a little bit of an idea of what our students who participated were doing. Another thing that I'd like to just throw in here is that this test was given on a computer. So you've heard us also talk a lot about the transition from a pencil and paper assessment to one that's given on the computer. So it's interesting to, to learn that this test did just that. So you see sort of a visual pattern here. You see a little bit of information provided about the repeating pattern that makes up this tiling system here. And then a portion of that question that we were able to access involves calculating some area, which means having some sound mathematical understanding, but also the ability to sort of transfer information, interpret what's provided, extend that thinking. And we talk about testing 15-year-olds, ninth and 10th graders, this is certainly not math that would be above their appropriate level. This is material that would be, or concepts that would be addressed during middle school and extend into geometry in high school. You see where it says question two at the top. So there are other portions of this question that were not released or provided for us. But one can presume that there was an opportunity for students to extend their thinking once they had calculated the area of a portion of that pattern, to maybe project what it would take to tile, you know, 100-square-foot room or something of the like. That's the sort of thing we're talking about as far as synthesizing, conceptualizing, extending that thinking in a way that communicates clearly what students are thinking. So I just wanted to give you a chance, since we saw the results as well as some of the items, to share that with you. And now I'm going to turn it over to Amy so she can tell you a little bit about what the significance of the reading results were.
Good evening. This, there's quite a few words right here. So I'm going to kind of give you a very brief look at the reader profiles. Reading is an area that we continue to look at, how do we engage students? And for me, this test did give us quite a bit of feedback. So on the left, you'll see surface, and then there's categories, wide, narrow, and restricted. So if, if students are surface readers, what it means is that they really don't have effective reading strategies. So they often don't know how to engage in a text. If they are surface and wide readers, so they don't have those strategies yet, they still read for enjoyment. May not be high-level books, but they are readers. They'll pick up a magazine, they'll read digitally. The narrow readers are much more focused. They might be, "I am only reading graphic novels," or "I will only read anything sports-related." And then we have restricted readers who just absolutely do not read at all. They, unless they have to do it for school, they are held to task, they will not read. So then we have on the flip side, the deep readers. And these are students who have the effective reading strategies, are able to tackle texts. So if you're a deep and wide reader, which is the quadrant we want our students to be in, they, not only will they read what their teachers require them to read in school, but they are readers outside. Students typically, and all the research shows, students who continue to read on their own for enjoyment, they have higher scores across the board. Then again, we have the narrow readers who, you know, have the strategies, but again, might focus on a certain type of, maybe they're nonfiction readers alone. And then there's the deep and restricted. And those students, again, have strategies, but do not read for enjoyment. So it's just the minimal that they have to read. So if you look at our scores, you know, to the left, we have, we did pretty well with the surface. We don't have much in that category. There are places to work on, absolutely. In the upper quadrant where we want to be, we are there, you know, relatively close to the United States average. My concern was, we have students with deep strategies, but they are highly restricted readers. And this is a battle, you know, I think at the secondary level, from six to 12, it is something that, you know, every meeting with teachers, we discuss all the times, how do we engage students? It is a constant topic. And this year, after these results came out, one of the things we did start, both George and Bill came up with the money so that we could buy a new book called Notice and Note. It's reading strategies, highly effective. If you walk into any of our secondary buildings, you will see Notice and Note signposts for fiction. We'll probably be tackling the nonfiction ones next year. But we've done a lot of research on the best kind of reading strategies to help kids at the secondary level. I think in the elementary level, we have reading specialists in the classrooms, teachers who really are almost their own reading specialists as well. It's something that is so ingrained in young kids, elementary kids, you walk into a classroom, they all have books. You get to the secondary level, it, it changes a bit. You know, a lot of things change, middle and high school. So we have really, at the secondary level, the teachers have really been looking at new ways to engage students, offering choice. So this is something we will continue to push on, push forward. We were really excited to see that students do have the strategies. And when they were doing the surveys at the end, one of the things they did talk about was, yes, I do have the strategies. I know to summarize. I go back to the text. And, and they talked about those things in the survey. So, but it was great for us to get an opportunity to see, how do we continue to push forward? Now turn it over to Mark for the science.
Good evening, everyone. Actually, I'm not going to talk about science so much. One slide will be, but this is, just to tell you, what else does this OECD report provide for us? It's not just results from those three disciplines, but it's also about culture and climate of our school. Right? So these are really interesting results. And they're compared to students in the United States. So if you take a look at this graph here, this shows you for mathematics, and I do want to caution you, the way this is read, it's almost a double negative, so to speak. So the way it's read is, they give you some questions that were asked of the students. And for example, one of the questions was, "Students don't listen to what the teacher says." And if you look, our school is the red bar on the far right. And it looks like 90% of our students don't listen to what the teacher says, but that's not correct. The correct interpretation is that 90% are the students who reported occasionally or next to never have that interruption. So cautious with interpretation, right? And the same thing happens with, "There is noise and disorder in my classroom." Well, our students are reporting occasionally or next to never. And if you look at the results here, the triangles, the downward pointing triangles, they're showing you the lowest-performing students in the United States. And the upward pointing triangles are showing you the highest-performing 10% of students in the United States. So as you see where Whitman-Hanson lies, we're either to the right of the higher students or we're, in most cases we are, except for that one question is, "Students cannot work well." And we're still above the 90% piece there. So interesting information. And you get this for mathematics, reading, and science. Other reports that are provided, next slide there, yep, is on student self-confidence. So this was interesting. This one happens to be science. But we have similar results in ELA in math. And in this report, they're showing you again, Whitman-Hanson is the red bar and the diamond is the United States. And this is asking students questions like, "I study school science because I know it's useful for me." So what they'll do is they'll ask students questions about, how do they think this topic or this discipline is going to affect them in their career or in their future studies? For an example, another question might be, "Studying my school science subjects is worthwhile for me because what I learn will improve my career prospects." And our students are scoring beyond what the United States population as a whole are saying. So interesting results. We also get a few other reports. One gives you a socioeconomic piece. And another says, "How well could students actually handle a task?" So we get this motivation, student self-confidence, and culture of our school, just from this one test that's provided from 75 students. And it's worked through statistics to give us decent results. Mr. Simonak was going to finish up with what our takeaways are from the summary of the results.
Thanks, Mark. And group, we were really happy. I was really happy with the results. Of course, I went right to culture to see how our kids were doing. I didn't look at how we did math, reading, or, or science. I wanted to see how our kids felt our classrooms were, were being run. And as you saw the statistics, our classrooms were being run very efficiently. And our kids feel really good about the learning environment. Then we broke down into the categories of what we need to work on. And Mark, Amy, and Brian have some tasks. And what I want the committee to know is this isn't just about high school. When we're looking at now a K to 12 assessment of how kids have learned throughout their experience at Whitman-Hanson, as you see, some freshmen had only been here, you know, four or five months before they took this examination. So most, most of their learning had been in, in, in the middle school area or younger. And I had some sophomores take it. So we had, we have a balance of, of our, our grade levels. It was really great. We had a couple of breakout sessions, one in Natick over the summer, and then one in Boston. And when I say pride, we held our own against some of the W schools in the state. We were right in the ballpark, even though we scored better than most of the schools in our socioeconomic spending level. We were up at the top there. So we do well, bang for our buck. And we held our own with the other, other schools in, in the state. And as you see, in the country, we're, we're pretty good. So you should be very proud of the education that the students are receiving at Whitman-Hanson. Amy and Mark and Brian have their takeaways. We're going to work with the elementary principals and, and middle school principals moving forward. We didn't take this test this year. We're taking it again in February of 19. We've allocated funds for that already. And it'll be interesting to compare the data of what we've learned from this assessment, putting into context next year with curriculum and instruction for our seventh and eighth graders who will be taking that, that test, and what we see in 19. I'll be happy to report out once we get those, that data in another year or so. Do you have any questions for the group?
Anyone have any questions? Chris?
So just a quick question. I think you said this was an international comparison? Did you, did they share any data on kind of how we compare internationally, not just US?
The actual report that we get from this is this thick. And so they typically have, they can, they can compare this internationally. Now OECD is an adaptation of PISA, but PISA is the international test that's given. When they looked at our scores, and, and we have the report, if you want to look at it, they compared us to Shanghai, U.S., and Mexico. Well, we never scored as high as Shanghai, but we did do a lot better than Mexico. But we, they will do this with all of the different nations. And you can get an in-depth report. So the actual report is huge. We've given you the highlights. Some of the interesting things that happened when you look at the international piece of this that I found, we, I went with them to the meetings in Natick and in Boston, is when they looked at motivation of U.S. students, and the example was mathematics. And they presented students with mathematical challenges. They found that U.S. students had huge confidence in their ability to solve that problem. However, when they solved it, they didn't always get it right. When they tested Japanese students, they had very little confidence in their ability to solve the problem. But guess what? They got it right. So it's interesting to see how different educational systems work, what we can learn from other nations and, and other parts of the U.S. We were involved with about nine other high schools in this. And that was also a real give and take. And as Jeff just said, we really did well. And there is a graph that shows how we did our socioeconomic status. And it's a graph like this. And Whitman-Hanson's way above what you'd expect our performance to be. And I think we all felt very, very good about that. And that's the support of our community, our school committee, everybody should be proud of that success. And we can now use this to move forward. So this has been a wonderful team. As you see, social studies and history isn't a part of it. But clearly, the deep reading that Amy talked about is, also translates to all of other content areas and courses that we have. So happy to answer any questions. You'll hear more about this next year from this team as well. Yep, Rosman.
Ruth, I just want to mention, before coming to Whitman-Hanson, I really didn't know what OECD was. And Ruth mentioning the test results, this is the nice little folder that she gave me with all of the information, if anybody wants to read it. And I did read every single page because I just found it so fascinating. It was great, as Jeff said, to see Whitman-Hanson doing so well. But to me, I think the most important slide that we saw tonight was the one that Mark presented on the, the feelings in the school. And we clearly were above everybody else in, in the fact that, you know, that the class is quiet. And when I read that, I said, you know what? What jumps out at me is respect. The teachers respect the students and the students respect the teachers. And as a former teacher and principal, I know that unless you have that respect in a classroom, you're going to have trouble. And it just, that was another thing that jumped out, is the respect that I think that the teachers and the students have here in Whitman-Hanson.
Thank you, Rosman. Any other questions?
Mr. Simonak, before you sit down while you're still here, you have an Eagle Scout project here that I didn't have that, can we get into that, please?
How are you doing? My name is Caleb Parkinson. I'm an Eagle candidate from Troop 22 in Whitman. I've come to you today to ask for your permission in helping with my project. It is a, well, it's a bridge. It's multiple things. It's a bridge. I'll have to fill in a trench. It's, it's for the cross-country course is what it's mostly for. So like, for example, I'll have to, if you could, please. I'll be filling in a trench built for the World War I class at our high school. I'll be filling in holes around the area, leveling the ground. The plan is, is there's a drainage area that I will be building a bridge over, 16 by 4. I'll do trim work. And there is a small bridge over by the staff parking lot, which I'll be cleaning up and making it more level so that kids could run over it. I have gotten permission from the Hanson Conservation Committee to work the land. And, oh, I also forgot to say, there are trees which I will be taking out of the ground. They're not native to the area. I'll be taking them out and I'll be replacing them around the area with five or six trees that are native to the area.
Would you be seeking a motion?
Any question? Yes, go ahead, Chris.
Make a motion to accept?
Second. Thanks, Dan. Discussion? Any questions? This is a current running track that cross-country is using out around the building. And these are in wet areas that you're trying to cross over now that they are using, but there is no access to it?
Yeah. For example, the bridge, we go around the drainage area. It's left kind of like a mark right there, like in the, in the ground. The plan is to build a bridge over it and then let the, like, nature take back the area that's been trampled on, all that stuff. I gave a walk with the, with Ernie, myself, and members from the Conservation Committee. I learned a lot about trees that day. Great. I fully support this. It will be a benefit to our school, our kids, and, and actually, our environment out there. It's going to solve some problems for us.
So we're bettering the environment?
Absolutely correct.
Fantastic project.
Cool. Thank you.
Any further discussion before we move to the vote? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would I be able to get a signature from someone?
All right. You want to, whichever you want to do. Because I can, I can, this is pretty quick.
Okay. Just give me a second so we can move on. Okay. Just give me a second so we can move on, and I'll give it right back to you. Okay, as I said, we're going to move around a little bit. We're going to go to FY 2019 budget, because I know that both of the town administrators are here, some of the finance committee members, and I think some of the boards of selectmen are here. So if any of them would like to come forward, we'll discuss this. Christine, you want to start off? Or Ruth? It doesn't matter.
I mean, I can begin. At our last school committee meeting, as you know, we had a lengthy discussion about setting the assessment, and various proposals were given. And when we ultimately finished that, the budget was approved at an assessment increase of 11%. There were questions as to whether we'd go as high as 13 and include no-cost, full-day kindergarten. Decision was made not to do that because it seemed to be something that was not going to be sustainable. So at this point in time, that is where the assessment increase is. We have met with town officials since then, and that's sort of where it is today. We have been, in talking to them, we have also looked at the possibility of tight finances. Both towns are somewhat struggling with trying to get an 11%. So we did look at, well, what would happen if we made some adjustments? One adjustment we were able to make quite easily is that at the Conley School, there had been a bubble in enrollment at one of the grade levels. And we found there is one position there that we would not need to fund for next year. So that provided another adjustment of about $90,000. So we were able to lower what we're looking for in terms of a level service budget by that amount. If you recall, we also brought in a couple of positions that would be part of the proposed budget, which would be the community liaison position that we talked about for a parent liaison who would work at our elementary schools, and also an additional inclusion, special education teacher to work in the sciences at Whitman Middle School and Hanson Middle School. If we adjusted those from the budget, we could reduce what we were looking for by about $300,000, which would be equivalent to a 9.5% increase in the assessment. And we did share that information with the town administrators today. So 11% is where we are, clearly recognizing that revenue's tight, and that's where we are today. So Christine, I don't know if you want to add anything to that? No? It's all set?
It's all set.
Either town like to rein in on that? Mike? Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to express my appreciation to Ruth and to her team in terms of the conversations we've had over the last couple of weeks. As the superintendent has detailed, both towns are obviously, and unfortunately, this seems to be the case every year, struggling in terms of meeting the assessment that the school committee has voted. I'm happy to say that cooperatively, we've come up with some numbers that we are working towards trying to meet. My request to the school committee would be to seriously consider what I think the superintendent's recommendations are. The town of Hanson, and I believe the town of Whitman, remain committed to funding education to the best of our ability. Obviously, our boards of selectmen find it extremely important for our communities, for the continuance of our Commonwealth in terms of educating our children. But again, we need to be able to fit the requests going forward in with what both towns can afford. And hopefully, going forward, I know that there was an attempt in this particular fiscal year to try to start a conversation earlier than later. That sort of fell by the wayside. I think that we have made a commitment to start trying to really put our nose to the grindstone beginning this new fiscal year. If we're able, obviously, to come to an agreeable compromise going forward, to try to understand where both the school needs to be and where the municipalities need to be in the out years. So, you know, we're dedicated to trying to do, you know, everything that we can do within our means, within our current budget to continue to support the schools at a level that I believe they need to be supported to. So I leave it to the school committee to give some consideration to what the superintendent has said. And we're committed to do whatever we can. Obviously, and I know the school committee recognizes this, that we've got obligations on our side as well, in terms of public service, in terms of emergency services, in terms of, you know, administration, in terms of all the things that we need to do. And I hope last year proves that we will work cooperatively with the schools. But again, hopefully, we can come to some sort of a figure that both sides can work with and both sides can live with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
As you know, the Whitman Finance Committee's been meeting for the past six months. And as we find ourselves getting closer to the final stretch for annual town meeting, we find ourselves faced with a very significant challenge for one of the most difficult budget deficits in recent history. The reality is that the town cannot financially support the budget that was presented by the district earlier this year. Although we respect the challenges that you face throughout this difficult budget process, the town just cannot afford significant increases such as this year to year. So to be clear, I just want to say that the Finance Committee has not voted to make any recommendations with respect to the budget at all to this point. But at our meeting last night, it was generally accepted that we could recommend a 5% increase over last year's budget. This amount still represents a significant challenge for the town. But it's not only what is proportionately viable to present a balanced budget to town meeting, but an amount that is realistically sustainable in subsequent years. So that's where we are from the Finance Committee's perspective. And we appreciate the opportunity to have an open dialogue as well. So.
Any questions for Rick?
I think Frank's going to make some additional comments as well. Thank you.
Mike, while we're waiting on Frank, I think I have a question, and if you'd come back up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Is the town of Hanson prepared to support the 9.5? Do you know, which would equate to 8.77? As it meters out through the chart, as you know, sometimes, because of enrollment, it swings. I'm looking at the chart itself, and a 9.5 assessment to the town of Hanson would come out to 8.77%.
Well, obviously, it's easier for us to deal with that percentage than the percentage that the committee voted a week or several weeks ago. I can't make that commitment right now, Mr. Chairman.
I understand.
It's a conversation that I need to continue to have with my department heads, most particularly with my accounting department. The potential of that percentage was given to us in a conversation this morning. I really would be kind of jumping ahead of things in terms of making any commitment. I think it would be inappropriate. I think I don't want to say something out of turn. It's certainly something we started talking about right after we had the conversation earlier today. So I hope that you respect the fact that I don't want to make a commitment right now. But again, obviously, it'd be easier for us to try to get to that percentage than the original percentage. And again, we will make the commitment, and I think I've made the commitment, to individuals sitting here this evening, that we'll do our best to do what we can within our means. And as I said previously, I think I appreciate the fact that, at least the administration at this point, and hopefully the committee going forward, is working with us and trying to get to something that won't eviscerate the schools and won't eviscerate the towns. So it's still a question that needs to be worked on. And I just don't, again, feel I can answer that question right now.
I know I put you on the spot, and I apologize. I just wasn't sure if there was a feel of where it was going to go, where we had set the assessment at 11%.
Yeah. Well, obviously, at 11%, and I think, you know, my colleague Frank will agree that neither town could really burn that sort of a number, unfortunately, without some severe devastation to the municipal side. And I really don't think, and I respect everyone who's sitting here, I really don't think that this committee wants to see, you know, the police, the fire, all the people on the municipal side really hit really hard on something like this. And I think that, you know, on our side, we don't want to see the schools get hit hard either, in terms of whatever numbers, whatever figures on which we can agree. So it still is sort of a work in progress. But I feel more comfortable, after the conversations we've had in the last couple of days, that we'll meet something that we'll find a number that we can all live with.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions from Mike McKee? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, everyone.
Frank?
As Yogi would say, deja vu all over again. And I direct this comment to Bob more than anyone else, because Bob and I had the most significant part of this conversation a year ago, when we were in the same place, having the same conversation. It's easy to commiserate and to make commitments and say, we're going to do better next year. I think we've been saying that for 15 years. And then, the act of governing happens, the act of education happens, we come back from, you come back from summer break, we come back from a quiet summer, and we start doing all the things we have to do to make our world function. And the budget sits back there a little bit. And around October, November, we say, oh, we better get moving on this. And by March, it's too late. I don't have answers. I do, but I'd rather not, rather not offer them right now. I do want to make a couple of comments just to frame everything. I've spent a lot of time looking at how we do business. And I'm going to make some observations. In the last 10 years, we have contributed 83% on average of our growth to the school budget. Now, that's a phenomenal number. The problem is, our growth is a terrible number. Neither Whitman nor Hanson has industry. Neither Whitman nor Hanson has an opportunity for rapid and strong growth. So we kind of putter along in our Model T, and we wait for somebody to build a house, and we add 12,000 here and there. And before long, we end up with new growth somewhere in the area of 250,000 or 300,000. What saved us last year and the year before was phenomenal growth from one source. It was personal property. And the only, the great thing about the personal property taxes, it gave us enough money to be able to fund the budget we funded last year, and to purchase and provide the support for the articles and expenses that are associated, both with the schools and the town. Unfortunately, that's not a sustainable number, and that word "sustainable" hits us again and again and again. The 94 or 92 million in new growth, and that's not tax dollars, that's property value, that we experienced, has already amortized in two years by almost $30 million. So it's going to be gone in three or four years. The good news is, the tax revenue that that growth generated still exists. The bad news is it shifted from commercial to residential property. So now the homeowner in both towns, and the property owners, commercial property owners in both towns, will pick up that continuing cost for that growth. Last year, forget last year, it doesn't matter, it's history. This year, we're looking at a, if I remember our number, I think it was a million three... Sorry. A million 550, no, it's not right. 13,451,969,000. That's what the school committee certified. And that's what we put on a worksheet to work for our budgets. Rick, a few minutes ago, mentioned that the Finance Committee and discussions last night came up with a number of 5%. And that number is devastating. It's absolutely devastating to the schools. But that 5% is $623,402. That 5% is also 76% of this year's new growth. It's real easy to see the problem. What we need is a solution. And there's only a couple of ways that this can happen. Sure, we can hammer away and make our best effort to get the citizens of Whitman and Hanson to say, we will struggle to support our schools. We will vote to raise that money. But it's a lot of money. To meet the budget you originally submitted, an override would generate at a minimum $370 a year to the median, single-family household in Whitman. I don't know what Hanson's number would do, because it wouldn't be quite as high as ours, but would have a similar effect based on their budget. Do I think that that's an option? Frankly, I'm concerned about the viability of our communities. Whitman and Hanson are residential suburban communities. And the only thing that we have to draw people to Whitman and Hanson is a quality of life. And a significant part of that quality of life is the quality of the social structure of the towns. If you're a young family looking to buy and occupy a home and live there for some period of time, you're looking at schools. Certainly, that's what I looked at when we moved here. And first question I get from the people that do call our office is, tell me about your schools. Because that's such a big part of what defines our community. So would I support a tax increase of 300? Well, for me, it'd be 440, I think. But would I support it Charlotte? Would enough people support it to make it happen? I hate to be a downer, but I don't think so. I just don't think it'll come to fruition. But there's another piece of this that's even more important. Even if we do that this year, last year, our budget for our assessment was a million one. This year, it's a million four. If your budget grows at a rate of 4%, and we don't have any relief from the state, next year, probably going to be a million five, a million six. No, I just, I just did four years' worth of revenue projections. This year, not counting local fees and other things that we add to our levy in order to balance the year, our primary driver is taxes. Our levy limit, excluding the debt exclusion for the high school bond, is 26, sorry, 25,158. 25,158,000. Next year, I can tell you it's going to be 26,000. Next year, I can tell you it's going to be 26,61,000, because the only two things I have to do to figure that out is add 2.5 percent to last year and estimate growth. The following year, it's going to be 26,963,000. Could get to 27 million, depending on how much general property increases, because that also raises the levy. But we're not allowed to predict that. When we prepare our budgets and when we submit our recap sheet to the Department of Revenue, I can't count anticipated appreciation in real estate, and I cannot count indirect costs, which is about half a million dollars, that we draw from the enterprise system. So that ends up as free cash. So that's typically, when towns get free cash, what drives that, are indirect costs that they receive from other areas, perhaps pilot payments, and the redemption of tax properties or the sale of foreclosure. All of that, plus whatever's unspent in your budgets, goes together to make up your new cash, free cash figure. And I estimate next year's free cash will probably be close to what it was this year, which is a million dollars. We use that for capital, and right now, we're married to a bond to, for the police station in Town Hall. So the vast majority of our free cash goes to serving that debt, which is inside the levy. So when we talked today, Ruth had, and I know Ruth, you have to be the most frustrated person in this room.
No, this is my last time to do it. He is, right there.
It, it, Ruth made a comment today about the need to redefine how we fund our schools. And, and I told her about a little story about me before I moved to Massachusetts. And I actually lived in a state that passed a retroactive income tax in September that went back to July 1st. Because they lost a lawsuit about how they fund schools, and the courts ordered the state to close the schools until they found a, a, what's the word? Constitutional way to pay for schools. Very interesting. I know we were in one of those suits many, many years ago, and some changes were made, ed reform came in, but it hasn't kept up. And by far, the most expensive piece of business we do is educate our children. The typical non-regional community that has its own schools uses between 65 and 70 percent of their revenue to fund those schools. By the way, we're at 52. So are we making our effort as compared to other communities? No. But we're spending what's available, and in some cases, beyond that. This year, if we passed a budget that included a 5 percent increase to Whitman-Hanson, I would still have to come up with another $200,000 above and beyond everything I've identified. And I'm not asking you to vote a 5 percent budget tonight. I think your job is even tougher than mine, because we're going to react to what you do as a school committee. I know that you're going to work on numbers, and we're going to kick things around for the next week or two, as we normally do during this process, as we prepare for town meeting. But I wish I had answers for you. I don't. I, I have five. I know where I can get the extra money. If we went to seven, then I would have to do some other things, but I could still get to the money. If we go to nine or 10, we're changing the way we do business in the town, because that's the only way I can make up that money. And, you know, it's, it's something we do every year. We look at it, we figure it out. I have, I am probably on several dot boards right now, as a result of what I did with this year's budget. I just took a ruler and a pen, and I just scratched off articles left and right. I showed, I showed the list to Ruth today. But even doing that, we're still underwater. And at this point, I, I, I can only say that we'll do whatever we can. And that's a great pledge to build a budget on, but...
Anyone have any questions for Fred? Fred?
You just mentioned the 7 percent number.
Mm-hmm.
If our assessment was higher than 7 percent, would you be committed to giving us the 7 percent and then, if we had to go to that override?
If I have to go to an override, I'm going to have to show the people why we have to do it. And why we have to do it would be to fund all of our operations, schools, municipal operations. I had drawn up an outline, which I presented to the finance committee. Well, I gave it to Rick a little earlier, but I believe they looked at it last night. And in it, I constructed a scenario with three questions for an override. Question one, can we fund X? Question two, can we take the bond payment, which we are currently paying out of capital money, out of, out of free cash, and convert that to a debt exclusion and put it back in the, put it into the tax rate? Because one of the things we have to do in planning ahead, besides what we're talking about here, is recognize that we have ongoing capital needs that are not going to become less, they're going to become more. And we need to come up with a way to pay for them. The articles that I removed this year, by and large, represent both capital purchases and capital maintenance. And, you know, we start talking about capital maintenance. We have a building here that's 12, almost 13 years old. You've done a remarkable job of keeping it, keeping it up, but it's starting to show its age. There are things we should be doing. There were things we did, there were things we put off. There are things we're putting off this year. They're not going to improve with age. So we have to do that. That has to be part of our plan. But it's difficult to plan when you don't have an avenue to fund it. I mean, I, you know, I, we've talked about long-term projections and how to better do things, and where, right now, we're putting together a group that's going to develop a long-term approach to capital planning and predictability. But I just showed you, in a matter of a couple of minutes, how easy it is for me to put five years of revenue together. I know where it is. I know what it's going to be. I don't know how to increase it. And I need to increase it to do the things we need to do.
And that's one of our biggest struggles, is the revenue piece. The state accounts for 52 percent of our budget, but yet, they're only increasing by about a half a percent per year.
Actually, this year, it's going to be less than 50.
No.
I think, what do we get, 23 million?
No.
Oh, we're higher than, 24 and, almost 25, yeah.
So 24 and change. We're at 50 million.
Mm-hmm.
They've dropped below the 50 percent mark.
And, and then it'll increase.
And each year, that...
Well, it's that target share. They're going to keep penalizing us.
Well, I, you know, I, I hear that, and, and I understand what target share means. And I understand that it takes an effort to get there. But it's not going to change our Chapter 70 money. We're not going to get more Chapter 70. I mean, SB, the MSB folk, not MSB, DESE folks were here several months ago, and we asked that specific question. And the answer was no. So target share is a responsibility. It's not going to change how we fund or, or what we get. So short of making a dramatic change in the way the Commonwealth funds education, I'm talking statewide, I'm talking a broad-based approach. In New Jersey, the year I left there, we had no income tax. In September, we passed a 3 percent income tax retroactive to July 1st. That's how they funded the schools. It worked for several years. Now, if you go to those communities, you'll see they're all struggling with property tax to make up the difference between what the state pays and what the communities pay. And by the way, it's not 3 percent anymore on the income tax. I think it's 6.
Dan, but it was like what you were saying, part of that, it's like a perfect storm. We lost, went from 70 something percent down to 54 percent in the way we were being funded. That was back about the same time we probably did our police station under the levy limit. Right there, two bad things happened at the same time, not knowing either one was going to offset the other. But when that happened, the school's been getting rid of things, left and right. And both towns, unfortunately, between the towns and the school back then, not realizing, never did anything to correct that major funding issue. And all we're doing is we're, I mean, we can't afford to get rid of positions anymore.
You know, I hear that, but I take exception to it. When, when our contribution to 76 percent of all the money we raise, in terms of growth in the budget, we are doing it. There just isn't enough. This year, your budget increases, what, 4.2 percent?
4 percent.
Okay. Last night, I did an exercise, or the other night, I took out the school budget, and I calculated what the increase for the town is, eliminating the impact of the schools on the percentage of growth in our budget. It's 2.1 percent. Don't penalize me because I'm trying to limit my growth. And I won't argue with you that you're having a difficult challenge controlling your growth because of the uncontrollable costs. And we both face them. You know, anyone who thinks salaries are a controllable expense are deluding themselves unless they include in that plan that from time to time, you're just going to cut people. Because short of that, salaries aren't controlled. How much you vote for a raise, sure it is. The difference between two and three and four has an impact. And depending on the size of your staff, it has a significant impact. We have, in the last couple of years, gone 2 percent, 2.5. Our current three-year cycle, one year's down at 2.5, two years now exist at 2. That may not even be an option going forward. But we all have to maintain the minimal services that we're required to deliver. And I don't have an office that's overstaffed, where people are just relaxing and, and don't have a whole lot to do. In my treasurer-collector area, we have a director and we have four, four and a half employees. In the assessors' office, I have an assessor and two employees. In the accountants' office, I have an accountant and one employee. In the inspectional services office, I have a half of an inspector and one employee. In the health department, I have a health inspector who's 24 hours. I have a part-time clerical employee, and that's it. You know, veterans, I'm sharing with Abington. I mean, we're not flush. When I make cuts in personnel costs, I may be closing offices. COA, I have a director, an assistant, and two part-time employees catering all the seniors. Library, I have one, two, three, four, five full-timers and two part-timers. Everything else is on-call subs. There's just, there's not a lot there. But we will do what we have to.
Anyone else have any questions? Fred?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
This is just a suggestion. It sounds like we're talking about two different things a little bit. I think what Dan's getting at is more of a political question than a management question. Like, so if you're talking about fundamentally restructuring the way an entire town does its business, if you're, if you're suggesting that, for instance, that the contribution the town makes to the schools is so low that there has to be a shift, and that the only place it can come from is other departments, and the town has to reallocate how it spends its money, if that's a question, I'm not saying that you're saying we should do that, but I'm saying if that question's on the table, I think that, that fundamentally comes down to a town meeting question, it come down to what people are advocating as a vision for how to do this town. I don't think that, I think what we're running into is, there's a need for substantial reform, and that the school committee has been identifying this need for a while. But you're going to the management side of things, you're going to the finance committee and that sort of thing. And it's, I don't, really wouldn't expect it's within their ability, it's not within their job description, to just go and, okay, we're just going to completely reorganize how we do the town. So that's like a fundamental question.
Not doing it that way. What I'm basically trying to say is, there was a big fund, there was a big fund gone. I mean, there's no way to make it up, it's been past 10 years, to make up, you know, a significant drop in one's financial bucket.
Yeah, but when, when you address the town, say, the town isn't doing its part to fill that gap.
No, it didn't do its part, is what I'm saying. And we never did anything to recover the big cap of money that the state paid the school system, which allowed the town to have an abundance.
Yeah, but the thing would be to take the money you have and spend it on schools. And the only way to take the money you have and spend it on schools is to use the money you have? I mean, I mean, that's the only thing a town can do. Only the, only the voters can go and vote for a tax increase. So short of that, you're talking about reallocating the money, changing the pie chart. That's, that's the basic question. Are you willing to do, to put that on the table and talk about it? I mean, I'm not saying we definitely have to come up with a certain number and take a certain number, but that hasn't been on the table, as far as I've been on this committee. That has never come up. I mean, we kind of sleepwalk our way through town meetings. We leave it to the town officials to come up with some numbers, vote yes on everything, get out of there in 45 minutes. So maybe it should be on the table to talk about how much of each dollar that comes into the town, how much of that should go to schools? Not the new money, which is a tiny portion of, but the overall structure. Because that's, that's your only other option, besides raising taxes. That's it. Those are your two, that's, those are your two choices.
Excluding the enterprise account, which we cannot touch for anything but sewer and water, our budget is $31 million. That's how much we spend. That's on everything. That's on salaries, expenses, articles that are presented for various purposes. That's, that's the whole pie.
Robbie?
I know I've asked this every year. Unfunded mandates on the state side, just the state, so I know there's federal and there's state. What do we spend a year, rough guess, Ruth?
Well, I mean, we know...
Just the state.
What you're looking for in an increase, actually.
Yeah, I mean, sure.
My point with it is, if Frank and Mike and you guys are aware of it, OSHA is trying to come into municipalities.
Well, they're coming in.
Not in all of them, though, because right now, there's pushback happening. This is the thing I don't understand, between teachers' unions, school committee groups that are out there, in every, in, in superintendence, that the pushback isn't there for these unfunded mandates. State comes out and says you're going to do this, and you're paying for it. Well, you know something? Time to stop pushing back. Because I'm just going to throw out there, it happens in the public safety sector all the time. You want to do something, okay, state's got to fund it, or fed's need to fund it. There's pushback that goes on. We're much smaller than the schools across the Commonwealth.
I think, yeah.
And, and that's all thinking, I mean, and we're not going to answer it tonight, it's going to take years, but we always write letters to, to our representatives on, "Get us more money." Maybe it's time to start writing letters saying, "You guys found a way to fund it. We're not going to fund the..."
Transportation.
Transportation, fingerprinting, whatever it is. And I don't even know what they all are, but, but if we didn't have to pay for these unfunded mandates, well, that just solves, as Mr. Lyman said, that solves the problems.
Yeah, I think the better way to even call them are underfunded mandates. Now, there are some that are unfunded. For example, we are required to provide special education... For example, we are required to provide special education transportation for students who are unable to take the yellow bus. There is no reimbursement for that, and we are, we are over budget this year in special ed transportation. We are required, because of McKinney-Vento, to transport students who become homeless, and also children involved with DCF. We get a pittance of what it really costs. Regional transportation has not been fully funded for the past 15 years. In 2007, we received about a million bucks. We've never seen a million bucks for regional transportation since then. And the list goes on and on. You're exactly right, if that was funded appropriately, we'd be having a different conversation. I think historically, what happened, however, was in 2007, target share came on, they're trying to wean a district like Whitman-Hanson off Chapter 70, and the next year, we start to experience a recession. First year I was superintendent, the assessment increase was zero. Neither town increased its contribution. When that happens, it takes years to recover, and we're still not there yet. So I mean, there's frustration all the way around. I recommend folks put pressure federally, state, and then work with our local communities to fund education. We're getting less money at the federal level, because money's going for school choice and charters. We're not looking at the grants. The grants are not going to be as plentiful as they were. So it's at every level. You've got to be an advocate.
Bob, then Frank.
You're right, it's very frustrating.
Robbie, I agree with you, pressure-wise, if you take a look at the following states, West Virginia, Kentucky, Arizona, and Oklahoma, that's exactly what they're doing. They're shutting down the schools, they're going to their state legislature and demanding to change money. Maybe that's what Massachusetts finally needs to do.
I mean, we regionalized for all this reason, to make it more cost-effective, but more efficient, and...
And it is. But we don't get the incentives anymore.
Correct. Everything that was promised, we're not seeing years later.
Fred?
In the spirit of this discussion, I know I brought it up in the past, but I'd like to make a motion that we, as the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, seek to obtain counsel, either contingency or pro bono, that would sue the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the past 10 years of underfunded regional transportation.
What's the cost of that? How much did we lose on that?
It's $400,000 a year.
We're almost 5,000. Thanks, Frank.
Frank, thank you.
I don't know if anyone would like to second it, but I want to make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion? I have a motion and a second. Anyone, Fred, continue on.
I just feel that we need to do something, we need to try something. And to do nothing is not an option. To frame it, either pro bono or with the contingency, it doesn't cost the same monies out of our pocket that we don't have anyways. Who knows?
Kevin? We went through this with the, oh gosh, am I going to get the number and letter right? Was it 7C cuts?
That's right.
That we went through that?
That was through Mars.
I can't get that straight.
Those through Mars.
So we went down that path where, you know, there was an illegal cut, and there was a movement to sue. I don't know what came of that, though.
They never made the cut.
They just linked on it, so.
Yeah, they pulled it back.
Okay.
But this would be limited to our district.
Yeah.
And you'd be looking at, you know, 10 years, if it averages, you know, $300,000 a year, there's 3 million bucks.
Chris?
So I'm not opposed to legal action. However, I do think it would be something that would require a greater collective of various regional and/or districts across the state. So I think going it alone may be a challenge, but I do think it's time to come up with something, because we just keep talking about the same things over and over, year after year. So, you know, while I personally would struggle saying Whitman-Hanson should obtain counsel to file suit against the state specifically, I would be in support of some sort of mechanism where, whether we work with Mars or some other districts, bring them all here, let's have a discussion. It's not working, and trying to build some momentum in that regard.
Go ahead, Fred.
The only thing I would have the concern is if there was a settlement that would water down, could potentially water down a settlement. Then again, if they caved that quick, or were able to win, then maybe you get other people that they could go with themselves. You know, the other thing I'd like to add in conversations with our state representatives, as one had told me point-blank, look at how many regions there are, and look at how many regular school districts there are. You're going to get blocked. When I was complaining, this goes back 2 or 3 years ago about regional transportation. So I feel that the only way that we can try to get fully funded would be to take some action. And I don't see the detriment of going it alone if we're not having to worry about footing the bill, so to speak.
I can add something. I think there's another piece to this as well. The problem is that we cannot charge for transportation. So if you look at our towns that are in the area, they may do that. So the other option would be to look for legislation that reversed the requirement for regional transportation. Then you become self-sustaining, and you don't really look, you know, you won't get your back money, but you also don't have the constraints on you that we have.
Yeah, I think that's underrated. You can repeal these things. You don't have to fund them, you just take them away. You no longer have to do this anymore. And we could focus our lobbying efforts on that, like, remove the following things.
Allow us to charge for transportation, and it becomes self-sustaining.
That's my whole thing, is the mandated stuff is killing us.
Because we can't raise the revenue for it. That's the problem. I mean, if the...
No, and I get it, and...
But if we could charge for transportation, we could self-fund.
In dealings I've had with the state on personal levels and stuff, you know something? Sometimes you just have to push back on them and say, look, you're going to fund it. You want us to do it, you need to come up with a funding mechanism. It shouldn't be on Whitman-Hanson's back to figure out the...
Here's our bill.
Or repeal it, yeah.
Or repeal it.
Yeah, repeal it.
Well, I think Chris has the point, is that I think you get as many areas, school districts, and like Robbie says, push back, and you say, I would need to involve maybe the MTA, the NEA.
That's just it, exactly.
The school districts, and not just this town alone, because I think you have to make louder, some real loud noise, and tell the state that they're not helping public education whatsoever. Over the last number of years, the mandates, yeah, do away with them, because they're not helping us in any way. The schools can function, and we know how to run the schools. We have people making decisions that don't ask us what the implications are when we make those decisions. It puts us behind the eight ball. So I agree with Chris. If you want to go along with Fred's motion, I would say to have a meeting to contact surrounding schools. I would contact maybe mass teachers through our association. I mean, they get NEA and say, okay, what can we do? How can we put pressure on? What's the best way to do it? What's the fastest way to do it? Like I said, West Virginia, Kentucky, Arizona, Oklahoma, the teachers took it upon themselves, stormed the state house there, and they seem to be meeting their demands. What all we do, and I agree, is just talk in a circle.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and I think it's, before we move to this vote, I hear what everyone's saying. I just want to make it very, very clear that it's incumbent upon this committee to make a decision before town meeting, right up until town meeting, but I'm sure the towns don't want us making it that night, of what we're going to do with the assessments to the towns. Just for the benefit of everyone here, we can't go up, obviously. We've set the assessment 11%. We can go anywhere between 11 and 0, but we can't go 11 and 1/2. So what Fred's motion is, in the second, I think is very valuable. But it's probably going to take a year or 2, or even longer.
Not even considering it.
It's a start. I agree 100%, it's a start. But you have to think about both sides of this. Something has to be done and talked about and discussed this evening or within, I mean, I'm sure Frank and Mike is still here, don't want us, and the finance committee members don't want us waiting till the night of the meeting and roll up saying, hey, guys, here's what we're thinking. Okay? So I just want to throw that out there. I think it's valid. Does anybody have anything to add or subtract to the motion that Mr. Small has made? Yes?
I would just like to say that if we got the ball rolling, and there was a consensus of others wanting to join, and we could have power in numbers, I could see where that could work as well.
So you're asking for a consensus as opposed?
No, the motion's on the table, to initiate things, but as things got moving...
Take on others as they want to get on the bandwagon.
People want to jump on the bandwagon, so to speak.
Could I amend the motion that we, in order, before we do that, we would try to include as many towns as possible?
Would you just put it in the motion with, make it clean, please?
Okay.
Organizations.
You all right with that?
Yes.
Bobby, you all right with that?
I think you want to add like Mars, things like that.
So we're going to add the language, instead of seeking counsel, we'll also seek Mars, other organizations that would be pertinent, as well as other regional school districts that would like to join us.
Michelle, are you okay with that?
Sure.
Would someone like to second that?
Second.
I'll open it for discussion again. I know Sean's waiting, just give me 2 seconds, Sean, to see if there's any more discussion from this committee.
Can we, can somebody read the motion that's on the table?
Michelle, can I hear that motion?
To seek or obtain counsel, contingency or pro bono, to file suit with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts of underfunded regional transportation, and include as many stakeholders and organizations and school districts.
You okay?
So the motion is to seek, not to actually authorize the filing.
Start it.
It's seeking counsel.
And the intention was to seek and to begin the, and to step forward with the process, not just to say to someone, hey, you know...
I agree, but there's a difference to say, we're going to go obtain an attorney first, I'm going to tell them...
No, it's either, either pro bono or on contingency.
So that's part of the motion.
Yeah, nothing out of pocket, so to speak.
In other words, you're not stepping up and paying.
No, I was going to use your checkbook, though.
Thanks. Sean, Sean, would you just tell who you are and where you live, please?
Sean Kane, 31 Forest Street. I'm a member of the Finance Committee and special education teacher. In my work, we define a crisis when the adults in an intense situation don't know what to do. For even in the worst, you know, most intense situations that we handle, as long as we have a plan and people know what their function is, quickly improves. Today, we don't have that. I think we can sit around and talk anecdotally about what we can do, I don't really support that. I think as far as the Board of Selectmen is concerned, and the Finance Committee is concerned, luckily, we have a manual. There's a manual for the Finance Committee, and there's a manual for the Board of Selectmen that states pretty clearly what our role is. The Board of Selectmen, they are the executive branch of Whitman. Ask Dr. Kowalski, who I respect and admire, longtime public servant, I think he's an awesome guy, ask him what the priorities are in Whitman, and he'll say he doesn't know. To me, really, that's not acceptable. The Finance Committee right now couldn't put together a financial forecast that's accurate. Frank can predict some revenue, but ask him to predict expenditures, and that's very difficult. Utilities, medical insurance, OPEB, these are huge things that we have to worry about. The ability to put together an accurate financial forecast is something that takes hard work. There's very specific things that are outlined in the manuals that we should be doing, that we're not doing right now. We don't have a capital plan. That's not acceptable. We don't have a strategic plan. That's not acceptable. We don't have financial policy that guides our spending and borrowing practices. That's not acceptable. Without those things, you can't actively predict the future for how things will work out financially, and then you can't communicate that to the people. People don't know that this is going to be a difficult year, 3 weeks before town meeting, and then we're going to ask for, we're either going to present a horrible budget with terrible cuts with just 3 weeks to process, and then we're going to be reactive, or we're going to ask for some big tax increase, which seems, you know, not fair. I think that people in public service are asked to do a difficult job. You guys volunteer your time, members of Board of Selectmen volunteer their time, same thing with the Finance Committee. What somebody's able to do and what needs to be done are 2 different things. Right now, what needs to be done is people need to look at the manual, they need to roll up their sleeves, and they need to do the hard work necessary, the logistical nuts and bolts necessary to get stuff done, so that we can communicate accurately to the people about what the current situation is, because Whitman clearly is in crisis. The adults in our community don't have a solution. We're anecdotally, you know, talking around and around about what we can do. Let's fall back on evidence-based practices, let's do hard work, meet early, do all the proactive stuff necessary so that we can get ahead of the curve, because as Frank said, this feels like deja vu all over again.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion that Michelle read back in a second. The long and the short of the motion is, Mr. Small has made a motion to seek counsel pro bono or...
Contingency.
Contingency, to go after the state for unfunded, underfunded mandates.
Regional transportation.
For regional transportation. And I have a second. Is there any further discussion before we move to the vote?
Do we have a time certain on that, as to when we should start and when, in other words, is this going to be tried down the next few months?
Like to contact our attorney first thing tomorrow, see if he would be interested. That being said, if he wouldn't, maybe he knows of someone that might be. And obviously, everything's, before entering into any agreement, would have to come back to the committee as well. I'll make some calls, I'll call Mars, I'll start calling around to some other regional committees or people that are active, you know, within regions.
Would you be interested in a subcommittee? 3 or 4 members?
Yeah, we could do that, too. That would, that could work, definitely.
Okay.
I think I'd like to just vote on the motion first.
Yeah, I'm going to vote on the motion.
And then discuss that.
We'll deal with that.
Because we have a lot to vote on.
We're voting on the motion only, just so it's clear. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Mr. Small's motion? unanimous. Okay. Now, back to the budget process at hand. You heard from both towns, by the way, oh, sorry, Frank, I thought you were going. Lisa, Mike, thank you all for coming in, the Finance Committee members and everyone else that's reined in tonight. You heard, you know what we set an assessment at, it was at 11%. You heard the superintendent and Christine's reevaluation of, they could probably make it work at 9 and 1/2% with the cut that Conley from a position in some liaison and community.
The 2 special ed teachers.
Right. It cuts at about $300,000, brings it back to 9.5, 9 and 1/2%. As I said, you can't go over 11, you can only go backwards. We can restructure the amount, you know, we can revote it, you can stay put, you can do anything between 11 and 0. I just caution you, you can't do 11.1. Once it's set, it can only decrease, it can't increase. So I entertain a motion of anything, so I can move you into discussion. It can be stay where we are. It can be go to 9 and 1/2. It can be go to 5. I'm not making any recommendations, I'm just telling you, you can do anything you want. It could be go to 8.77. It could be to stay.
Mr. Trotter? I have a comment. It's a difficult decision to make, and I think personally, and I don't know how I else feels about it, if we could see what the cuts would be at certain levels, and maybe have another, another meeting.
For every half percent you cut, you're going to lose 1 and 1/2 positions.
Was that a good reason?
Say that, yeah.
Every half percent that you cut, you will lose 1 and 1/2 positions. Now, as we, you know, presented at the 9 and 1/2, we really don't lose positions, but we certainly don't add any. Once you get to 9 and 1/2, and you start going below that, then we start losing positions.
That answers my question.
Chris?
So for clarity's sake, we don't, we don't meet again before town meeting.
Unless we schedule one.
We can schedule meetings and meetings.
So I would be... So I would be.
It looks like we're going to have to schedule a meeting.
That's why I would be.
That was my idea.
I mean, that was my thought, not my idea. It was my thought. Not my idea.
I think Frank, Mike, I'm going to put you both kind of on the spot without pushing you too hard. Would you rather see us make this decision right now, so you know what you have to work with? I mean, if we stay put, you know we're working with 11% right as we speak.
My recollection is that you can vote a different number at any time, including after a town meeting.
We've done that before.
That's right.
If you're not going to five, going to a different number isn't going to materially change what we're working with and how we're going to approach it. If you go to nine or nine and a half, it's a lower number, but it's still something I don't have the revenue to. So we're going to meet with the Selectmen next Tuesday, and with deference to my colleague on the Finance Committee, I think the Selectmen do have a role in this, and we'll have something to say.
I'll just make the motion we keep it at 11%.
I have a motion, Mr. Collet. He said to keep it at 11%. I heard seconds all over
the place.
I'll second them.
Mike, do you second it? Okay. Discussion, go ahead, Bob.
I, I think I would really like to have the next meeting and then just strictly talk about the budget only, because I feel as though, I'm looking at this agenda here, and I know we have an Assistant Superintendent that needs to be recognized.
We're going to that next, by the way.
And there's a number of things here, and I, I think if we, we could be more focused on one single meeting budget. It may take 10 minutes. It may take two hours, as opposed to trying to go through now, because it's just.
Too much on the plate.
It's just like, yeah, it's just like all over the place right now.
I'm okay with that. Brett?
I'll, I do agree with Bob. I think that, you know, to be able to give clarity, I also feel that we owe it to the towns to try and give them somewhat of an answer as quickly as possible, you know, so that they can, you know, try and get their affairs in order as well. Myself personally, I'll just say that I can't see us going backwards in providing anything less than level services. I just can't see how we can be an advocate for a public education and go backwards at all. I mean, we need to stop stepping forward, not backwards. What we're offering now is just the basics, you know, and the wheels and the bus are falling off.
Okay, I have the motion to remain at 11%. I have a second. Mike?
Over the past week and a half, two weeks or so, as I had indicated, and I believe probably the superintendent has conveyed back to this board, we have been trying to work cooperatively on a number that both towns, and I know Whitman is in a worse situation this year than the town of Hanson, but to work cooperatively in terms of what the towns can afford and what the schools can get by with at this point. The numbers that were presented in the last couple of meetings by the superintendent, again, the chairman asked me if I could make a commitment on the town of Hanson to 10 and a half percent, nine and a half percent, and I can't at this point. However, I can safely say we can't do 11%. We're trying to work cooperatively with the schools, and I think that my board, I think the board in Whitman, I think the citizens of both towns are trying to come up with a cooperative solution to move forward. I guess my point is, the town of Hanson cannot support an 11 and a half percent, 11% increase without some serious, serious impacts on the municipal side. Last year, we were able to have a cooperative conversation and get through the current budget year we're in right now. I'd like to think that that sense of cooperation, that sense of working back and forth, still exists between the town and, and the educational side. So I would ask that either you delay a vote to stay at 11% until you can consider a bit more and consider my comments and consider my colleagues' comments. We don't want to, we do not want to eviscerate the schools, but we also cannot eviscerate our towns. I think that there was an attempt that fell by the wayside early on in this fiscal year to start conversations early and try to come up with some sort of long-term solutions. And I think there's blame to go around to everyone in the fact that that didn't really reach fruition. I have said to the chairman, I have said to the superintendent, that I make a commitment, at least on my behalf, that starting the beginning of this coming fiscal year, we will participate and do whatever we need to do to try to get to where this district needs to be in the long term. That's the best that I can do in terms of what I can hopefully help to, to solve this problem. However, again, the town of Hanson cannot support an 11% increase without some draconian cuts that I don't think anyone in either town wishes to see. So, those are my comments. I continue to have an open door, and I think we've had a very open dialogue in the time that I've spent in Hanson. I will not be changing that, but again, there has to be a little give and take, and that's what I'm asking for. So I'd appreciate your consideration.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, I, I think the intent of the motion is to meet and discuss.
Mm-hmm.
We're not going to drop down something if we don't know what we're dropping. Right. I don't think we can really drop anything right now.
Just want to leave as it is. We're going to meet. We're going to go over this. We're going to figure.
I think we got the message on, on the 11%, pretty clear.
Wait a second.
The way I look at it is that we meet, whenever we meet, next week or the week after, is to discuss, is to discuss only the budget. And if we come down to 9.5% or lower, or stay, I mean, that's what we need to do. I don't, it's, I heard both towns. I understand what they have to say. I agree with, with you on how the ball got dropped on that meeting. You can ask Robbie for years. I've been in favor of a subcommittee, finance subcommittee. For some reason, it just never seems to get its footing. I think that's an appropriate thing to do. I think it's a very important thing to do. But my mind is just so much on this agenda, and there's so much discussion tonight, that I want to make sure I'm making a valid decision on what is the best percentage for the schools and the town. I understand, I understand the limits of both, so I just don't want to rush into anything tonight because I'm, my head's spinning right now. I don't really want to make.
Kevin?
I think the problem with this vote is that it doesn't accomplish anything.
No.
We already did the 11%. We sent the numbers to the town. They have them. So taking a vote again tonight to say, we still like 11%, it seems pointless to me. And I think it might be misinterpreted. If the intent is to have a second meeting.
Yeah.
And to take a closer look at the numbers, then we shouldn't take any action tonight on that particular question. That would be my recommendation.
And just to echo both what Bob and Kevin said, yeah, I don't think we need to vote on the 11, and I think you're right, it'll be misconstrued.
Yeah.
I think the sooner we meet, and I know it's school vacation next week, and a whole bunch of people are going to hate it, but I think it needs to happen next week, because you've, yeah, we're coming right up on town meeting. The following week, that Monday is the town meeting. And already, the both town administrators have a very difficult job.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion. Mike, you want to withdraw the second?
Okay.
Let's just move on.
Let's meet next Tuesday evening.
I'm not available.
Let's meet next Monday evening.
I'm not available. That's a holiday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
I may not be available. I'm available Thursday.
Don't the Selectmen meet on Tuesdays? They mentioned Selectmen meeting.
Yeah, Selectmen meet Tuesday.
They meet Tuesday. Yeah, that's correct.
So we want to give them a chance to meet?
Yeah, let them meet. Give them a chance to discuss it both. I think, Mike, does the Selectmen have a meeting also in Hanson next Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay.
We want to maybe do a Saturday meeting?
No. We won't get anybody. The 19th.
Thursday.
Thursday, the 19th.
How about the 25th? It's Wednesday.
I think we're on top of town meeting at that point, because it's, it's Wednesday.
Maybe did you print the warrant two weeks before?
I'm meeting the 7th.
It'll be next week.
It's the 7th.
Anything that you do, we're kind of on the top of town meeting.
You can meet the 19th. Are you here?
No.
We can meet without me, but I cannot be here the 17th. Absolutely cannot.
Okay. Does the 17th, or the 16th work for anyone else?
16th's a holiday.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know you said that. 17th.
Thursday.
Sorry.
Bob's not here?
I'm not here from the 18th to 25th. You can meet without me. I'm okay with that.
Well, the problem with the 17th is we want to make sure that the Selectmen have enough.
That's right, yeah.
You need seven votes to pass that.
Yes, we want to give.
About the 23rd.
I was going to say, why not the 23rd?
Try the 23rd.
That Monday.
Yeah, I'm not here.
Does the 23rd work?
23rd.
Do you need me here?
23rd work for everybody?
Good.
Yes.
Okay.
As long as I have information.
That's fine.
Do the 23rd.
Okay, so the motion's been withdrawn. The budget discussion is over. Unless anyone has anything new to add, let's move on to the agenda. Assistant Superintendent recommendation. Thank you, everyone, for your input.
Thank you.
I know it's a difficult discussion to have.
Okay, I have Karen Downey here this evening. I'm going to ask her to come forward to help us with this.
Mike, thank you. Both, Mike?
Thank you.
Frank, Lisa, thank you both. And I don't know where, you got away before I could thank him.
He's in the back. He hasn't left yet.
You know, I, I just wanted to say I appreciate the discussion we had. We may not have made a lot of progress, but we had a lot of issues. I'm not going to comment on comments that were made after I spoke. They speak for themselves, and I'll deal with it next week. But I appreciate you listening. I appreciate your understanding of the circumstances. Whether it meets your needs is a whole different ballgame.
I get it.
And, and we know that. I'm not, I'm not going to advocate for something I know you can't vote. It just doesn't make any sense to me. It's disingenuous, actually. So we'll work on it. I have an intention, meeting with both the Finance Committee and Selectmen in a joint meeting next Tuesday. I have some legwork to do before we get to that. The other thing I didn't mention in our budget proposal is, I am looking at setting a fee for non-mandated busing. It's not going to affect your budget because it's outside your budget.
Right.
That's something we choose to provide and we choose to pay for.
That's your revenue.
So we'll deal with that. But, but, you know, we talked about that once, Fred. If we did away with all $300,000, it means we have $300,000. It doesn't necessarily mean Whitman-Hanson's budget is increasing by that. Although, I'd like to think that anything that's school-related, that's reduced on our side, would in your, to your benefit.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Karen, you're up.
All right. I'm really hoping our candidate still wants the job after all that. So, thank you for having us tonight. We, our Assistant Search Committee, Assistant Superintendent Search Committee met, and we have a candidate to put forward to you. First of all, I just want to thank you on behalf of our committee for trusting us with that, with that job. It was a big job, and we were glad to do it. We had an incredible group of people who came together to find the best person for this job. We had two principals, myself and Julie McKillop. We had central office representation in Chad Peters and Lisa Forbes. We had a curriculum director with Brian Seelig, and we had five teachers, we had, representing all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. Pam Tassi from the Duval School, Cindy McGann from Indian Head, Christine Bartoloni from the Conley School, and then we had Beth Stafford and Kevin Kafka, who represented teachers, but also WHGA. So it was a wide range of people who came together. We had a lot of questions that we wanted our candidate to answer for us, and we wanted to know what Jeff Simonex, what he needed in an Assistant Superintendent. So prior to having the committee, I sat with Jeff. We talked about that. We talked about the qualities that he was looking for. We talked about what roles he saw this person taking on. So it was a really, we went into the, to the search committee having a good idea about what Jeff needed, but also having a really good idea about what we needed as a district. So we were, we worked really hard. It was a quick process, but it was an intense process, and everybody was committed to that. We came up with questions that everybody gave a lot of thought to. We went home. We thought about them. We, we sent them to each other. So we covered all the bases. We talked about safety and security. We asked about curriculum. We asked about operations. So we ran the gamut with these questions, and we were really pleased with, with what, with what came out of it. We had, we interviewed, all the candidates we interviewed were good candidates, but by far and unanimously by decision, there was one candidate who stood out above everybody else. And we are really pleased, not only with the commitment, the enthusiasm, and the knowledge base that George Farrow brings to our district, but we really loved his vision. And, you know, we've seen George here as a parent. We've seen him as a taxpayer. We've seen him as the principal of the Whitman Middle School. But what we saw in that room, in the interview, was George Farrow, Assistant Superintendent, and we were impressed and unanimously pleased to present him to you. So I hope you will consider our, our work as a committee as you think about the next move. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. And they spent a lot of time and energy doing this. When they completed the work, Karen came to Jeff and to me and said, clearly, we interviewed good candidates, but it was the unanimous decision to move George Farrow forward. Jeff and I met with George last week and spoke to him about that, and as a result of that, I think we're both very comfortable in recommending George Farrow as the next Assistant Superintendent. But clearly, that is a vote by the school committee, and we have George here this evening. We'll ask him to come forward. You may have some questions for him, and he may have some statements that he would like to make as well. Thanks.
Evening.
Evening. Evening, George.
First of all, I'd like to thank the committee. I'd like to thank all of you here. I'd like to thank the communities of Whitman and Hanson, and I would, I'd like to tell you that I'm very excited and a little nervous, because I don't know if I'm going to be a budget cut. But I would like to say that this is my 18th year of being a building-based administrator. You know, a lot of you see me as the guy that shows up late. A lot of you see me as the guy that comes from a baseball practice, or comes from his house, or just comes here because I'm not presenting. But I moved to this district for a reason. The things I've done with my family, the choices I've made in my family are for a reason, and that reason is so I could be the best principal that I knew how to be. So I've been the principal for 14 years. I was the assistant principal for four years before that in Westport, Mass, and I was a teacher in New Bedford. So I made the commitment after John McEwen hired me to come here, and then three years later, I made the commitment to move my family here because I believed in what this place was, or could be. Egotistically speaking, too, I wanted to make sure that the Whitman Middle School was a great middle school. Then my family grew. I grew, got into different things. And then I made the commitment that my children didn't go to Whitman-Hanson High School. They don't go here. And the reason why I chose that was because I chose to put my family first. When my son was a kid in my school, and then my daughter, I had to sit them down and tell them, you will never get an award. You will never be an All-Star. You will never have somebody say you got that because of who your father is. It's also difficult being my kid, because sometimes I'm opinionated. Sometimes I tell you what I think. Sometimes I tell you what I believe in. So when my son was in eighth grade, I asked him, I used to wake him up at six o'clock every morning, I still do, he doesn't get up now, but I would say, where do you want to go to high school next year? Do you want to go to Whitman-Hanson to be Mr. Farrow's kid, or do you want to go be Sam Farrow? And he said, Dad, I'd like to go be Sam Farrow. So he's earned that right. So he's earned that right. He's doing well. My daughter followed suit. But that also allowed me to still be the person I am and still dedicate what I think is right and what I think I know about education to Whitman Hansen. So now we come to another spot in my life. I was fortunate that I was Principal of the Year Massachusetts. I was fortunate that I was able to be the president of the Massachusetts School Administrators Association. And during my time as president, we unified pre-K to twelve, all Massachusetts educators in public and private schools and charter schools should they have wished to join. So this year, one year out, I'm still on the Executive Committee of the MSSA, MSAA, and it now has over twenty-seven hundred people pre-K to twelve. And those are building-based administrators. So then this opportunity comes up. And this opportunity has come up a lot in the last nine years. The opportunity of Assistant Superintendent. And it wasn't a right time for me. And the people who did it wasn't a right time for me. But I'm still here. I keep coming because I'm committed to this district. And so now I say, okay, this might be my time. So what is it that I can bring you? I'm going to bring you me. I'm going to bring you honesty. I'm going to bring you what I think. I'm going to bring you educational ease that I think we need to move forward. I'm going to support the vision of the new superintendent. I'm going to demand that we get a clear and organizational flow chart. I'm going to demand that we have funnels of duties that have to take place so that everybody can know what's expected. And so that we can move forward to tackle things like the budget. But it's also, we need to move forward to say, respect the teachers in the room. They're the most vital thing we have. Because what they do is impart education. And to be an educator and to educate kids is the greatest gift you can do. Some of you know that, some of you are part of it by your role right here. So that's one of the things I think we need to do. But I think I bring consistency. I'm not going anywhere unless I'm going to be the principal, hopefully, of the Whitman Middle School if we've got to cut a lot of money. But I'm going to bring consistency. And I think I have a passion. I think I know what leadership needs to be. And I think with some of the things that have taken place in this district, I'm on pretty much every committee that we have. So I think it's the natural next step. I would love to entertain any questions you have. We can, I'll talk education all night long. I know the time. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But I am excited, and I am fortunate, and I think that Whitman Hansen can continue to grow and prosper for the students that are in these districts, in this district.
Dan? I just want to know, are you going to change the way you are? Where's the flip-flops and shorts?
That's funny. Talk to the other members. I'm just me.
Yep.
I wear shirt and tie every day. I go to work, and I try my best. And I'm going to keep continually doing that.
Anyone else? Questions? I entertain a motion.
Second.
What's the motion? I was waiting, you know.
Wait, we're giving them the opportunity to run the other way for a second.
George, the door is still open.
I understand. Bill and I had an active conversation.
I entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the committee to accept George M. Farrow, Jr., to be Assistant Superintendent at Whitman Hansen Regional High School. So moved. District. District. So moved.
Second.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Congratulations, Mr. Farrow. Okay, back to the superintendent's report.
Okay. We're going to have, Kyle Riley is going to combine D and E. And he's going to be reporting very briefly on the English Language Learners Program and the upcoming Coordinated Program Review. Kyle?
Thank you. I've been cutting it back since the night's been going on more and more. So I'll give you the real quick version. I did put in front of you a sheet of the ELL piece with about eight bullets on it. And the reason I did that was twofold, I guess. One, so you'll have it in front of you, but one to show that there has been an increase this year. We started this year with twenty-seven English language learners and eleven former English language learners that we still have to monitor. As we sit here today, that number has increased to fifty-two. Thirty-seven English language learners, fourteen former, former English language learners, and one who's actually being tested right now. That's why my math doesn't add up right there. So that person's not in a category. With that, they represent quite a few different languages here. For everyone else who doesn't have the sheet in front of them, Portuguese, Arabic, Bantu, French, Spanish, Gujarati, Polish, Tagalog, and Russian. They reside and come from us, come to us from Brazil, Jordan, Africa, Haiti, Belgium, Puerto Rico, Dominican Republic, India, Poland, Philippines, Kyrgyzstan, and the United States. And the United States would be someone coming from another district moving in who still has that need. That broken down, all these students are tested. They are put in, I'll say, a category for simple speak and what their needs are assessed from that point, how much time they need with an ELL teacher. The fellow students are former English language learners, need to be monitored for four years after they test out of the program. The numbers in parentheses there are who's in which category. One of the struggles with low incidence, if you have under a hundred students who are in your ELL program, you are a low-incidence district. One of the struggles with that is they are spread out amongst our seven schools. We have teachers that need to get to seven schools to support these students on a daily basis. We have started this year with, as you see on the top, the two teachers there, Rachel Sellers, Michael Capert Negro. And most recently, in the discussion with superintendent, we felt the need to increase the teaching that goes on. We contacted North River Collaborative and asked for some assistance on a part-time basis, which of course is an increase to our contracted service line. But we need by law to make sure we're servicing these students. So we added Joanna George. She is, Monday and Wednesday, she comes in from one to three-thirty to pick up the extra students that, as you can see, the numbers have gone up. She has just started. She shadowed last week and is seeing students this week. It's been a, it's been a real increase. It's been a learning curve for me as well, not, you know, formally doing ELL in my past district. As you know, I came from a larger district and we had over five-hundred-and-sixty ELL students there, which at times is easier. You have a director just for that. You have teachers in each building that services those students that are full-time teachers, some, in some schools, several. Here it is spread out. It is a low incident, so usually lower is easier. It's not necessarily the case when you're, you know, doing a quick forty-five minutes airing, zipping over to another school, and so there's some travel time. So I just wanted to put that out there. It is probably, some pieces of this, the diversity piece, that you're probably not familiar with. I wouldn't have been if Laurie Wright wasn't providing those countries to me and those languages to me. I spent some time looking them up and where they're from. And it really is an interesting piece, but it's a piece as a little bit of a financial strain moving towards the end of the year.
We felt, thank you, Kyle, and we felt it was important for the committee to know that we did have to add some additional contracted services this year. You can see our number has grown. And sort of to go back to our budget conversation earlier, if a district has a hundred or more students, they are eligible for Title III, which is federal funding to help support your ELL population. At fifty-two, we do not get any federal support. We are fortunate that we do work with North River Collaborative and have been able to get some grant funding through them to support tutoring for our students. But this was really a for-year information. I think seeing the numbers that Kyle has given to you this evening, you can see we definitely have a growing population and need to pay attention to this. Any questions for Kyle?
Would it be fair to say that they don't get enough services to meet their needs? Or do you think, and I don't, I'm not criticizing the district. What I'm saying is, is it possible for somebody who can't speak English to have a, you know, competent instruction if they're not actually getting language lessons every single day? I mean, that's my question.
So they're traditionally in a classroom with our curriculum, being supported by a teacher. It works on strategies, does pull out at times. We meet what the state requirement is. Could it be more? Sure. I think a past model way back when was having these bilingual schools that were intense. It was a different model. This was intense in a different way. It was to get students embedded within the school and with their peers and learning in a more inclusive setting, I guess.
Yeah, and if I could add too, our program's called Sheltered English Immersion. And any teacher that has a student who is identified as an English language learner is required to take Sheltered English Immersion training through the Department of Education or through an accredited institution. So our classroom teachers also have additional training on how to work with students who do not have English as a first language. The other benefit, which I spoke about a minute ago, is through the Title III grant that North River has, it's provided significant hours of additional tutoring that we've used in the summer and also after school as well.
They learn in the summer.
Oh, yeah. We keep going.
They stay over during summer and learn this stuff.
Michael tutored for us all summer long at the Whitman Middle School and Conley School.
With that, in low incidence, we're not required to have a parent advisory committee. We do anyway.
We do anyway.
We have a parent group.
Yeah.
But there are some changes going on. It doesn't affect us too much. I just went to a DESI presentation on low incidence. It was still not voted on, so they didn't release everything. But it seemed to focus more about those kind of things. Would you be required to? Well, we're doing it anyway. Vocational teachers would need to kind of up the ante. That wouldn't really affect us. So there's some things out there right now that are going to be passed and sent some guidance to us in July. But it seems like most don't affect Whitman Hansen.
Any other questions? And then Kyle, if you could just update them on what's coming with the Coordinated Program Review. They need to know.
Sure. So the Coordinated Program Review, as we refer to as CPR, I swear it was because they made us do sixty-seven criteria and six volumes, and so CPR is pretty, we all needed it after we were done with it. That's changed a little bit. It's been streamlined, which is really good over the last couple of years. They've gone from a model of we want to see everything, every book in civil rights and special ed and ELL, to we're going to give you an opportunity to do a self-assessment. And in that self-assessment, you can report on students that, from these categories. You pick them, not us. We do that piece. They have three criteria in each of those categories, civil rights, the special ed, and the ELL. We report out on those in the student information. It's in special ed. Are we following timelines? Are we getting three-year-olds in and transitioning them into preschool? The transition of the other end, are our eighteen- and twenty-two-year-old students transitioning out? So there's different criterias in each one of those categories. We report. It's something that's due out in mid-May of this year. It's become a much more simpler process. I don't want to say it's easy because it's certainly not. There's a lot of work still that goes into it. But prior to this, there was no self-assessment, and you went right into CPR. And it honestly was sixty-two, I think, criteria for special ed, which were, every criteria was very involved. So that burden's been taken off districts a little bit, and it's been a little more streamlined. We report on criteria every single year, our indicators every single year. They have removed eleven, twelve, and thirteen in special ed because they just include it in your self-assessment now. So they're trying to make life a little easier and just pull out the important things that they truly feel like districts need to focus on.
And more information on that as we move forward.
It'll be continuous as we go forward.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, we are also presenting school improvement plans. This is our condensed version. And I think we have representatives from each level, and they're going to be talking. They know who they are, right? As we have moved through the process of school improvement plans, we have become much more focused as a team. We align our plans with our strategic plan, with our action plans, our strategic objectives. The other part that has worked so well over the years is our principals meet as a team, and they look at what are the common goals for the school district, and then they look at them at elementary, middle, and high school. And I think this has been incredible progress for us in terms of looking at how we do school improvement planning. So Julie must be the elementary representative.
I'm the elementary representative. And as Ruth said, we did meet together as principals. We looked at the three pillars, and then we decided at each level together what were going to be the main focuses. And the first pillar being every child, every day, healthy bodies, healthy minds. We continue to put down full-day kindergarten. We felt like we need to keep it as a focus. We don't want to not put it on that improvement plan. I personally had the experience this afternoon to have to do a kindergarten lottery. I sat in this room with a whole lot of people who really wanted me to pull their names out. And boy, everybody that arrived said to me, but my child really needs it because, you know what? Every single one of them was right. So we decided we'd keep that as one of our main goals to start, to continue to work towards that. We also kept in the pillar one that we would be doing Excel training, which has already begun in the district, but will continue on next year. The second pillar at the elementary level is going to have to be to start looking at our math curriculum. Our second pillar is a cohesive pre-K to twelve system of teaching and learning. Our math curriculum is funded currently up until the end of next year. And what we'll have to do is figure out what's next. Because of the age of the program, it is partially on the computer, that platform is not going to even exist anymore. So we have no choice but to start looking around and figuring out how to have a math curriculum so that we do have a cohesive system. And our last pillar that we all focused on was safe and secure schools, which is certainly something everybody in this district thinks about every day. But at the elementary level, we really need to be looking at our doors, our front doors, making sure that those are safe and secure, making sure that nobody is able to come in until they've been identified. We also will continue to look at things such as training and making sure communication is strong throughout the building and in the district. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
I was as quick as I could possibly be.
Good job. Yep.
I promise to be quicker. Julie basically did all the work for us tonight. So George being promoted and I being a big shot, his first order of business was to appoint me to present the middle school. Full approval plan. Pillar one is, Julie said, we're all in agreement with the full-day kindergarten, with the Excel. The social-emotional learning piece is just such an important aspect of things that we deal with on a daily basis, and we want to make sure that that's a major focus at all levels. For pillar two, in the last couple of years, our focus has been on the math and science curriculum, getting more resources for that. We've been able to do that. There's still some work that needs to be done, but looking towards next year where they're revising the social studies frameworks, we felt that our focus should be to revise and adapt the social studies curriculum, which would probably be put into effect, it looks like, 2020. So we're looking for that as our pillar two goal. And the safe and secure goals, both middle schools, we've had our front entrances secured over the summer, while the elementary schools still need to do that. So that was taken out. But the training piece, we feel, is still one of the most important aspects that we're going to be looking at over the course of the coming year. So, thank you.
Thank you. I volunteered myself for this. So as, as Julie Bill said, under healthy, healthy minds, every, every child, every day, and healthy bodies, healthy minds, we've really looked at our, our social-emotional learning, and we're continuing the same as what they said. And what I've added at the high school is we've added yoga as a growth mindset, that thought process. We also put therapy dogs in. We've had them here for exam time, and I'd like to expand on that. They went over great. Kids loved them, staff loved them, and I think it really had an impact in really bringing down the level of stress for our students. As you know, we have our transition room, which is packed most of the time with our students who are in and out of hospitalizations, either through social, emotional issues or medical issues. And, uh, Robbie and I actually had a conversation about ambulance trips, um, this year, and about seventy-five percent of our ambulance trips out of the high school this year were for social, emotional issues. So, it's not going away. It's only getting worse. Teaching and learning, um, we're looking at financially support, I hate to say financially support, but I did put in my budget this year to support our new robotics course. It's not, not super expensive. It was about $7,000, so it's there, but it's enhancing our instruction. It's giving kids an opportunity to do some hands-on learning. Uh, Mr. Sefansky presented to me. I think it's, it's a great course. We're looking at technology opportunities through Chromebooks. I'm not getting any of the Chromebooks that are presented in this budget. I was hoping to get some. We're going to full testing with 2019 MCAS. Uh, we're strag, we're struggling behind with online learning and use of Chromebooks here. Panther Education Trust has been pretty good to us, and I'm hoping our fundraiser in May produces some more Chromebook carts. And then, um, safe and secure, really the expansion here for us next year is pre-K. Um, we don't have security in the building after 1:40, so we're working with central office, and I guess that's me. We're going to look to support that, uh, making sure that somebody's, our buildings are, is locked up until 3:30 with our students, because we're a fully functioning school until 3:30 next year. That's going to be a change in culture a little bit. Our gym doors aren't going to be open and athletes aren't going to be moving forward or back and forth. I've already talked to Ernie a little bit and, and said, how can we use SJ services in our contract right now to provide that security? The other piece is, we're looking at that inner loop for drop-off, and that will ease the high school track, traffic pattern, which will, should make it a safer area for our kids coming into the building. And then, um, post Parkland, I've been outside every morning greeting kids at 6:30, and I think it's important that we put somebody, either a teacher through a duty or through a stipend, to be outside seeing our kids as they walk in. Love to say that building principal or administrator can be out there every day, but things happen, and as we saw on Friday, things happened, and, uh, we're hauled into different areas. But I think greeting high school kids especially, um, as they come off the bus, and, and we are open at seven, 7:05, and kids start rolling in here at 6:35 a.m., um, it's important that we see every kid and, and see what their, what their demeanor is like coming in. So, that's what I've provided for, for the, for the next building principal to work on next year, um, and I think the superintendent will support that.
Thank you.
So, we need to vote those.
An entertaining motion to approve the school committee, the school improvement plans of all three, elementary, middle, and high school.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? In unanimous. Thank you. Search committee update.
Okay. Um, the interviews for high school principal, uh, ended today. Lauren Matheson, who is the special ed coordinator here at the high school, um, is going to be putting forward, I believe, three names, and there will be site visits now arranged for those. I know some of you have expressed interest in participating in those, if you can let us know if you'd like to do that. Jeff, do you have any update on that?
I was just going to say, Lauren, uh, put forth three candidates, and I, I don't really want to put that out there because we haven't notified them yet.
Right.
Um, I'd like to see this process right after vacation take place with interviews with central office and the candidates, and then site visits right after that, and hopefully wrap this up within two weeks of, of, of coming back from break and getting an offer on the table to, to solidify that administrative position. Um, the committee was, it was made up of teachers from the high school, administrators from the high school, parents that are high school, uh, of high school students and two high school students themselves. Uh, I think it was detailed. Um, they asked a variety of questions, and I have every, uh, every good feeling that they put forth, just put forth, we've got candidates. I, I believe in that committee, and I think they had a good process as well, just like the assistant superintendent committee.
Right. Thank you. Our next search committee will be for principal of the Whitman Middle School. So, we are continuing to move on and on with the search, searches, and we will keep you updated. Christine, any update on the, this year's budget?
Um, I don't have any handouts this evening. Um, the budget is still currently frozen, and there's still concerns about overage in special education, as well as, um, the substitutes, as we continue to, our leaves of, paid leaves of absences continue to increase.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. McQuon School closing and transportation. As you know, some of you went on the field trip tonight at, at, from the facilities meeting and looked at some of the upgrades of the being done here down in the back of, here at the high school for the transitioning for McQuon. I think it's, uh, pretty much status quo. I know, uh, Fred, was there much discussion about the playground? I know you and I went to that site today.
And actually, when we get to subcommittees, uh, we could do it now, but.
Yes, we'll do it now.
Facilities, uh, we did discuss the options of where to place the playground, and the, uh, the vote was to recommend to this full committee that we recommend a fifty-one-hundred square foot playground where the old playground is at Indian Head, that would not require any, uh, additions, any fill, any retaining walls, or any enlargement of the area. Uh, they would be taking over the existing basketball court as well. Um, what, what they would do is they would have a smaller area, uh, within the picture for a basketball hoop, but there was also discussion across the street, there's an area that's already paved, you said, Rob?
Yes. I got to bring it before Poxit Fields.
That perhaps, uh, basketball hoops could be put over there. You know, when you consider the age of the students that would be using it in the, over at Indian Head, they really wouldn't be using that full, uh, basketball hoop and court.
Okay.
So, that is the recommendation of the, uh, facilities committee. If you'd like a motion, I'd be glad to make the motion that, uh, the full committee approved that, uh, site plan.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Second. Discussion. Does everybody know what we're talking about? Indian Head School, we pulled into the parking lot from the main entrance. It's on the left where the current playground is, all the equipment's been taken out. Right behind it, in the same level, there is a basketball court that's a full court, and it's going to be taking up approximately half of that. Fred?
Uh, well, the basketball court plus the fifty-one-hundred square, there's fifty-one-hundred square feet in total.
Yeah.
About.
Do you have a plan? Does anybody want to look at the plan?
Yeah.
Yes. I think everybody's just about seen it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Right. Thank you.
In unanimous? Okay. New business, 2017, 2018, school calendar updates. We had a request to change.
We, we have some adjustments because of the, um, we had, we moved the grading day because of all the days we lost, lost for the bad weather in March, so we just need you to vote that change.
An entertaining motion to accept the change.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? In unanimous. We also have in the packet of 2018, 2019, although it says, uh.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, it does say that, but it's not.
On the back.
It's a draft, anyway. It's a draft, and really why we're presenting that to you this evening is we just wanted to sort of establish for families in the community, sort of first, last days of school, days that we know that will be no school. We will have more information for you in May, when we have open houses on there, we have grading days, all those kinds of things. So, what this does is it has, school began, if you look at the August, um, it should say August, yeah, August 18.
Yeah.
Am I looking at the wrong, ah, flip it over. Flip it over.
Other side.
There you go. You look at August and the first day of school for kids would be the 29th, first day for teachers, the 27th. Jeff had a great recommendation to have the 31st as an early release day. This would not, this would be professional development, but to the extent it would give, um, our teachers opportunities to look at IEPs, to look at 504 plans, and just to make any classroom adjustments, become familiar with students. And then, you know, after Labor Day, we're, we're in full force. This would also have the election day off. It was the consensus of the committee to do that, and this will be the first time they'll be voting at the Hanson Middle School. And Good Friday this year is part of the spring break, so that's not a separate day off, and that would move the last day of school to the 13th of June. So, we're really looking at those as placeholders, and then we'll give you better details next, next month.
Okay.
So, we'd be looking just for a, you know, a tentative approval that these dates work for you.
Consentually, is everybody okay? We're not going to vote it yet because it's going to change?
Well, you could vote the certain days here.
Quick question. So, I know in the past we had, you guys had talked about maybe from a leadership perspective, opening after Labor Day this year to build in some time, but you think that's not necessary?
Well, wait, Jeff and I had a lot of conversations about that. We also talked to the leadership team, and we felt, given the horrendous weather that we had this year with seven snow days, that we probably shouldn't do that. And we end up in good shape in Whitman-Hanson every year because we do start before Labor Day. One of the reasons was really to give, um, Ernie and his team a little more time, and when we talked to him, he said, we'll work around that, we'll be okay.
An entertaining motion to accept the calendars presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? In unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for the amended regional agreement getting out late. It was brought to my attention that they just got it. Part of the problem was, as of last Monday, there was another meeting to discuss some of the changes that were just, that were brought to our attention about it. Um, one of the reasons it's coming to this is we are trying to get it to be brought forward for a town meeting with all the votes that have to be taken. I think that may possibly be a stretch to get it approved for this town meeting. I know that we were trying to, but it's going to get approved by DESI, it's going to go to the Board of Selectment.
But you can approve it first.
Right. I understand.
It has to happen here, and then it would go to select.
Why don't we push this off to that next meeting? So, we can read it. I'm, I have no problem if you want to put it off until the next. Yeah, because I'd rather read it than just go, I mean, this is a lot of stuff to read.
You could put that on your agenda for your budget meeting and do that.
We did have a motion not to put anything on the budget meeting but the budget. Yeah, but if you want to make that town meeting, it's just a vote. It's just a vote. This is time to read it. Everybody okay with putting off until the next meeting?
Yeah, just put two things on that agenda.
Okay. Policy. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Do you want to talk about?
No, no, not, uh, just later.
Okay. Yeah, Fred?
Nah, nah, just, I'll wait till.
You want to wait in the meeting?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Policy recommendations. If you look, there's guides for subs, and guidelines for substitute teachers.
That went out.
And nurses, and also, tonight's handout had some updates recommended by the policy subcommittee meeting.
And most of these are minor changes. We had a meeting, uh, recently, and the first part, we, everyone have the handout, where number one talks about the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. This was a requirement, really, to just update language to be in alignment with the new legislation. So, that's really what that one is. That was number one, so we went through all those policies and we've changed all the language. The second one is we looked at the new recommendations from MAS C. We've tried to stay on top of that this year. These are mostly just minor language changes to ensure that we stay in compliance. And number three was that we had a policy that MAS C doesn't even have anymore, and we found that we were covered under GBEA. So, the subcommittee voted to eliminate that one because it's an antiquated and outdated policy. So, there are really no major changes here, but clearly they make sure that our, our policies are as updated as possible, that we'd be looking for you to approve.
An entertaining motion.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? In unanimous?
The second are the substitute guidelines, and, looking for them.
I think it raised the per diem, didn't it, Ruth?
Looking for, well, we did a couple of things. Oh, okay.
You can use those.
Oh, I had it here. Okay, so what we did is, there had been a separate policy for substitutes. The problem with that policy was it set monetary amounts, which over time become outdated. So, the subcommittee said, let's try and do guidelines for substitutes. This is something you can revote regularly as, as we need to pay more people. We then went, I went on the DESI website and looked at what they actually call substitute teachers. We then aligned our language with the state, so we would be doing the same things they are. I also sat down with WHA to make sure we were all understanding the same sort of guidelines. So, that was a piece that we did, revised the language. And then, secondly, in terms of compensation, this was the recommendation. If someone that we'd like you to vote, they, seventy-five bucks a day stays, but that means it's an unlicensed teacher, just a daily sub. Eighty-five dollars a day, the teacher's licensed, or if we have a retired teacher in good standing that wants to substitute, we're not going to require them to re-license because they left with goody vows, seems to be fine, and they can have the eighty-five bucks. Um, then we looked at the long-term subs, did the same thing, one-fifty without the license, one-sixty with license, same thing for retired teachers. And then, we have school year subs that cover whenever someone's out for the entire year, and they would start at a step one of their highest degree. So, we felt this would work much better with what we were doing, and we would ask for your approval of that recommendation. As I said, it's been run by WHA, and they are also in support of this.
An entertaining motion to accept this.
So moved.
Second.
I would probably say July, as we go into the new budget. It shouldn't be effective immediately because you, we haven't budgeted for it.
I have a motion. Second, anyone?
Yes.
Second. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
In unanimous.
That's great.
We don't have any gifts to accept. We do have one field trip, Whitman Middle School, grade eight trip. They're going from June 5th to June 8th, New York and Philadelphia. Purpose is educational, approximately a hundred and fifty students. We have a tremendous amount of, um, chaperones, including assistant superintendent Pharoah.
Might be his last trip.
Could be our last trip.
It will be by then.
They have EMS on, on the, on site, so we're good with that. An entertaining motion to accept.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? In unanimous? Okay, subcommittee reports. Warrant subcommittee. Shell, there was some warrant things in there. Have they been voted?
No. Not yet.
Students of March 12th and March 28th, and they're in the regular packet. Did you say when the warrants were signed? Who signed them?
An entertaining motion to accept the warrant in the packet.
In the packet.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Regional Agreement Committee, as you know, you have the final draft in front of you. We met last Monday night again to discuss this. You will be discussing it at the next meeting. Policy subcommittee met. You just voted on their recommendations.
And if they could possibly vote the minutes that we gave them, that would be great because then we will be up to date, we won't have to meet again.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second, the policy subcommittee. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? In unanimous? That was a lot of fun. Legislative update, Mr. Jones, and I understand Mr. Small, too.
I'm good right today. Thank you. The House Ways and Means today released their, uh, 2019 budget. Not good news whatsoever. Uh, very, very little for anything of, uh, increase per se for us. Uh, chapter seventy, you may see thirty dollars per pupil as opposed to the twenty dollars from the governor's budget. Uh, regional transportation, on a whole, was up a million dollars, I, or 1.6 percent.